Once again for your patience, you know, again, we're, we're still kind of living through the world as we know it currently and we appreciate everybody's flexibility, the boards, all the boards as well as the townspeople for joining in virtually remotely. So better safe than sorry. So until we get our marching orders from the state, we'll continue to go this route. So, so the meeting's been called to order. A piece of business for the agenda, Marlene, would be the announcements. I would also ask, if you're not speaking, could you mute your microphone because it does create some background noise? So under announcements, I know we're going to have a comment on the Memorial Day Parade and incorporation day. So, Marlene, were you going to speak to those? As far as Memorial Day goes, I think we all know there's not going to be a parade this year, given the circumstances. There's, there will be certainly honoring our vets, though that is still going to happen with the American Legion. I noticed the flags went up yesterday, so I don't know if that was Buster or the town. I'm not sure, but whoever it was, thank you very much for continuing to do that.
Brian, that was the DPW.
Oh, the DPW.
Our DPW is doing it now.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to Phil and the guys at, and gals that took care of that. So it, it just makes the town look that much nicer and I love seeing those flags up. So thank you to them. Marlene, I'm sorry, I'll let you speak to the Memorial Day and incorporation day.
Brian, I didn't catch, did you, so there won't be a Memorial Day Parade, obviously?
Right, right. And I don't think there's any events. The, the American Legion, as always, are still going to do their honor. Joe might even know more about this.
They are.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, can I add on that?
Yeah, please do it. Thank you.
Okay, as far as Memorial Days, they, the Legion did talk with the Board of Health and the Board of Health is allowing a small, small ceremony. So the Legion will still at 10:00 AM meet all the, go to all the cemeteries with the Honor Guard and then come back in front of Memorial Hall and do a small ceremony. So there won't be a parade, but cemeteries will still be done by the Honor Guard and a small ceremony and volley will follow in front of Town Hall. So as far as that, I can speak to that. Marlene can speak to the 350th.
Thank you, Ed, for that. And, and thank you again to our American Legion for continuing to honor our veterans, especially given the circumstances now. So, thank you. Regarding the 350th, Marlene?
Showing that one day, you know, originally the, the planned activities for May 31st have been altered. There will be a brief, very brief presentation in front of Smith Academy Park, I believe at 11:30. And I know that I spoke with Cher Nicholas and, and they very much would, would appreciate it if people were not gathering, you know, around. People would like to pull over on, on the side of Main Street and, and watch or, you know, they can stand at their cars with masks. But there will be a, a presentation that day at 11:30.
Can I speak to this a little bit? Hello? Marlene?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, please do, Diana.
Right, so we do have, you know, we'll still be trying to recognize this important day as best we can and in as appropriate a manner as we can under the circumstances. I want to thank Cher both for her hard work in planning this and then in her hard work in having to replan it, but still maintain the, the, you know, how special this will be. It will be filmed and then people will be able to watch it on HCTV. I'm not sure the exact details of that, but it, it will be shared online so that people will have a chance to see it at a later date. And then I also wanted to mention, oh, we'll, we'll talk about some of the other 350th stuff later when it comes up on the agenda. I just wanted to add that about the 350th. So it is not really designed to be a spectator event at this point, unfortunately.
Thanks, Diana. And thank you, Marlene. Marlene, was there anything else under announcements?
No.
Did you have Diana or Ed? Diana or Ed, did you have anything?
No, I'll discuss my stuff later.
Okay. Ed, did you have anything under announcements? Okay. Lydia, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention that, remind people that there is voting, early voting by mail. They can pick up applications at either post office and also the center store. An application, ballot will be mailed to them and then they can return the ballot and they don't, there's no necessity to come to the polls if they feel safer not coming to the polls.
Lydia, what is the deadline? Lydia, what is the deadline for ballot requests?
For ballot requests?
Yeah, like, like for people to get them into you before it's too late?
I'm not sure to, Friday before the election, but that's when there's voting, early voting in person.
You keep, you keep breaking up.
Voting in person, early voting in person is Friday before the election. However, this is only by mail. So you have to get your application into me in sufficient time for me to turn around, mail the ballot back to you and you to mail it back to me or drop it off at the drop-off box before the polls close on Election Day.
So maybe at least a week before Election Day?
At least a week if you, if you plan on dropping it off.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lydia. Was there anything else? Okay, so there's no more announcements. So as we move into public forum, I do want to read the public participation at Town and Hatfield Select Board meetings. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So just wanted to mention that as we do at our meetings. And at this point, we are actually at the public forum part of the agenda. Is there anybody on that has something to say from the public?
Hello, Mike, can you hear me?
You're fading in and out, actually, Mike, to be honest with you. And as I, before you start, let me just once again reiterate, if you're, not for you, but whoever is not speaking, if you could mute your microphone, it would really help with the sound quality, I think. Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Henry, close that door at the top.
Mike, yeah, I have audio mic challenging. Just wondering, Brian, since there are going to be three meetings tonight, basically, meeting, a Board of Health meeting, and then a Finance Committee meeting, could there be three public forums, one for each meeting?
Well, we're really having one meeting as far as, I understand what you're saying, Mike, but that we're really having one, it's one meeting, one agenda, one Board of Select meeting. Is there something in particular you wanted to address?
No, I just, you know, I mean, we had, you know, a comment or two based on how things progressed, you know, on or around the beginning of the Finance Committee meeting. I don't want to, you know, belabor this meeting at all. So that's why I was asking. I, I just don't want to, you know, there may be members of the Finance Committee who aren't even in the chat room or in the, in the Microsoft team room at this point. So it's possible when the Finance Committee joins the meeting, could you open up the meeting for a five-minute public forum at that point?
That's not my plan, to be perfectly honest with you. It's, it's one meeting with one agenda and there's just multiple groups that are part of it. You know, if we can, if we have time and the, and the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen see fit, then, then, you know, we, we can, we can see what the scoop is at that point, Mike, and what the topic is. But as, as I also just read, you know, that these meetings are for people to certainly participate during the public forum. And then beyond that, it's really to let the, the boards go forward with the business that they need to take care of.
Okay, well, if, you know, if possible, you know, appreciate that opportunity. If not, well, it's, that's the way you're going to manage the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, the first item on the agenda, the Board of Selectmen are going to have a conversation regarding what historically has been a May reorganization of the board and, and our assignments. But I would ask my colleagues that before we do that, since we do have a large agenda, if we could maybe just move that down to later in the night, if you guys are agreeable to that, to have that conversation, so we can knock some of these things out before we have our meeting with the Finance Committee.
Agreed.
Diana, so Ed, are you okay with that, too?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll just move that to, to be a little bit further down tonight's agenda. At this point, we have some information regarding the, the COVID-19, where we stand as a town, where we stand as a state, where we stand, you know, our whole community and our buildings. So was Carrie able to join or?
She is.
I'm not here.
Oh, okay. So, so we were going to ask the Board of Health, you know, for an update from your perspective. I would also like to go on the record to say that the Board of Health, in conjunction with the Fire Department, the Emergency Management Director, the Police Department, and the Town Administrator, and, and other departments and work groups that are in Town Hall, have been doing what I would say is a fantastic job of, spearheaded by Carrie, of, of just keeping everybody up to date, working with the state, working with other municipalities. I mean, it, it's really, it's been a trying time for what's going on in our world, but the Board of Health and Carrie in particular has really, really taken the lead on this and have done a fantastic job. So take it away, Carrie. Yeah.
I echo those sentiments.
I appreciate that. So Brian, do you want me to start with just an overview of what's gone on over the past two months and then we can get into the reopening phase discussion?
I, I think at a high level, Carrie, I mean, we have been sending out the, you know, the, the week, if, if, yes, I mean, that's fine. But I, I mean, I, I think it's, it's more about where are we, it's more about where are we today.
I'm not going to prolong it.
Yeah, okay, sure. Whatever you think.
So as, so as of today, we have, in the town, we had 10 cases as of now, eight of which have now been released from quarantine. So we only have two that are left on quarantine and that's really only for another couple days. We do have CNS wholesale as, as a business is just being watched. They're doing very well and trying to keep things contained, but they have 400 employees there. So the fact that they have cases in the building does not surprise myself or the Department of Public Health. But we are watching it very closely. I've been working with their HR people. They've given out, they are keeping excellent documentation of who is self-quarantined because of just being exposed, who is actually positive cases, et cetera, et cetera. So that's going actually very well. So as most people know, the governor obviously yesterday gave out new orders on what he's calling a four-phase, it's four-phase setup that's going to happen over the next few months. And so what we're, what we're working on as a town right now is going to be Phase One. We meet weekly on Mondays as individual department people. So myself, as the Board of Health, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Board of Selectmen Chair and the Town Administrator, and also the DPW Director has also met in a couple times for the meetings. And we discuss weekly updates and that's where the letter comes from and our code red message comes from and we go on a week-to-week basis. At this point, it's taken a lot of planning. We're putting forward a plan for Phase One and our biggest priority is to keep our employees safe, me, number one. And then, and secondly, is to obviously keep our residents safe once we start opening up the Town Hall and other, and other buildings that are public municipal buildings. So with that said, with the guidelines from the governor and discussions that we've had as a group, I'm going to read forward what we've come up with as a plan. The date question I'm right now, and that's mainly for the fact that we're waiting, I'm, I'm going to call them screens, but they, the Clerk's Office and the Treasure Collector's Office already have these screens on their counters which will protect a customer coming into the office and the employee. We had to have two specially made ones done for the Assessor's Office and the Secretary's Office because of the way that their counter actually is made up. So we're waiting on those to be delivered. Then they have to be put together and then they have to sit, Lydia, I believe you said, for three days, put together before they can be basically open to the pub. Instead of having a start date of June 1st, which was our goal, we're really looking at June 8th, Monday, June 8th, as an opening date. And that's tentative based on making sure all the supplies are here, everything that we need to have the public protected and our employees protected are all here and set to go at that point. Plus, we have to do some internal training of what office staff, people, office staff are going to be responsible for taking care of for themselves on a day-to-day basis. Understanding all of that, this is all new to all of us.
We'll ask the care.
And some of these things are discussed and going on, regulations that are going to be for everybody. We can, and it's expected at that point that everybody will just follow the guidelines at that point. So I will read off what we've had in place and then we can go amongst ourselves, board-wise, of discussing if people, if, in the end, if you got.
So Carrie, Carrie. Carrie, excuse me. So you, you are fading in and out and, just, just as an FYI. So, so go ahead. Your, your video is clearer now, so maybe, maybe the connection is better.
I'm sorry.
That, it's not your fault. You blame the internet. So, so yes, I, I think what you just said was you were going to read off what we had at this point, if I'm not mistaken. You were fading in and out. Okay, so why don't, why don't you go ahead and do that, please?
Okay. Marlene, if I faded in and out again, will you, I can see you on my screen and if you'll just raise your hand to tell me so that I can stop so people don't miss parts. All right. So the following are orders from the Board of Health on how the municipal offices will be opening and responsibilities that must be followed on a daily basis per the governor's reopening phase plan. Number one, officers, offices will be open to the public starting the week of June 8th for four-hour blocks only two days a week. Those days will be Tuesday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and Thursdays from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Number two, offices will not be open to the public any other days of the week. Only office staff will be allowed in the building at that time. Three, one customer per office at a time for any business. Four, disinfecting of office counters regularly after each customer is the responsibility of each office. Number five, offices, doorknobs of all building doors, interior and exterior bathrooms will be cleaned, will all be cleaned and disinfected daily by the janitorial staff. Six, masks. Masks will be worn by customers when being in the building at all times. Seven, six feet distance of office staff must be met at all times and if it cannot be, then masks must be worn by the office staff. Number eight, disinfectant and hand sanitizer will be supplied by the Board of Health for the initial opening. But once those supplies are depleted, it will be the responsibility of the, of the office or facilities management to resupply those products. The Board of Selectmen need to make a decision on that portion of this order of who will be responsible for those items. Number nine, employees will be responsible for taking their own temperature and keeping an employee health screening form that will be checked regularly by the Board of Health, by a Board of Health member or the emergency manager, and those will be supplied by the Board of Health or emergency manager to each office staff. Number 10, everyone entering the Town Hall will be required to enter and exit the south door and will be screened by someone assigned to the door checking temperatures and asking health questions. Anyone who has a temperature or refuses to follow this process will not be allowed to enter the building to do any business. And number 11, office staff, that is of the age of 70 or older, it is recommended that these employees do not work on-site during the two days the building is open because of age and potential health risks, but can be present in the building the other days of the week that, that the building is closed to the public. So that's draft one.
Yeah, so, so just to follow up on that. Thank you, Carrie. So Carrie and I and Bob, Emergency Management Director and the Police Chief, Marlene, we all, and I'm sure many of you, saw what the Governor and Lieutenant Governor's discussion was yesterday morning at 11 o'clock. They, they were giving the Phase One. And basically what we did was from a, from a protective perspective, from an opening slowly and, and, and trying to get in, back into the groove slowly but surely and safely, that's where we pretty much got our guidelines to follow as far as the, the town buildings go. So that's what a lot, where a lot of this was derived, derived from.
Brian, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure, yeah, please.
In the, when, when we were, well, the phase that we're still in with the closing of the Town Hall also allowed the members of the Select Board and the Board of Health to be in the building. That wasn't spelled out in the last ones, but I mean, we still need to be in there. So maybe that just needs to be added to who's allowed in the building?
Oh, yeah, I can, I'll add those, those individuals into that section of who's can be in the building.
Okay, and then, is this?
It's going to be the same people that were limited to that before.
Right. It just doesn't say it in, in there. So I, I just think it should probably say it. And then, does this also, does this document apply to other town buildings that have employees, like the school? Or are they sort of doing their own thing? I mean, we certainly don't want people in and out of the DPW garage that don't work there. It's sort of the same protocols, right, in other buildings that are open?
Correct.
Fire station, whatever?
It's going to be set for all municipality buildings.
Okay.
The school, I've already been working with the current superintendent. I've met with the school and the principals and even with the incoming superintendent and principals. I know that both of them have been part of the meetings and listened in. So we have a plan of moving forward. We just met last week about how they're going to close up the buildings and clean the buildings, et cetera. And then it, it'll be the same situation. The school can, should follow the same guidelines that they're, or we can, I should say, as the schools' hour-wise, I will need to talk with John further about that, of what they want to set forward with two days a week of the offices being available for people to come in if they need to. The biggest part of all of this is that we really need people to understand and follow what we've already been doing. If you need to pay a bill, take your bill receipt, write a check or push cash in it and drop it in the drop box that's now outside the building for less in and out of the building, less interactions in offices, et cetera. And it's the same thing with the schools. If people can do communication via email or telephone at this point and for the next couple of months to come until we really have a better handle on this, that's the, that's what we need to be following. The problem is, is that we have to, at some point, we have to slowly come into the fact that, that this is, this is obviously have to have to some, oh, sorry. We have to get back to some working order. So that's why we're starting with these lesser hours. And really, I was focusing these, yesterday and today, on the Town Hall specifically. Liza, Eliza has been, has set up a great process for the library. And we've been back and forth in communication, so she's not looking to open up to the general public at this point. And the schools, other than the teachers coming and going, there really is no need for people to be in and out of the school buildings either for any kind of work.
Well, they're setting up, the school is being really great about setting up a procedure for, because students left school expecting to go back. So they're, they are setting up a procedure, a very controlled, organized procedure for students to be able to go back into the building and get their belongings and return anything to the school. So the school's been really good about it. I just wanted clarification on it, that's all. And then I just want to mention, you know, you talked briefly about like the sanitizers and disinfectants and everything. Carrie, you and I spoke briefly last week about the possibility that the FurCog is going to do a bulk purchase of PPE, which would include those items. Did you happen to get the survey and take that survey?
I have a.
Okay, so I can, I'm going to send the survey. So maybe what I'll do is send it to Marlene and ask that Marlene maybe distribute it to our various departments that might have interest in taking part in this bulk purchasing, because it, it might be something that's really great for the town to do. So I'll send that to Marlene to be distributed.
Okay.
Thanks, Diana.
Is that okay, Marlene?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay. There's, they're still just investigating if they're going to do it, but we should let them know if we would participate, so.
Carrie, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Opening date, isn't that predicated on whether or not the building opened and the construction completed?
So I don't know if my computer's cutting out or yours, but I think you're asking if June 8th is all based on if the building will be open because of the, the fire suppression system? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
So the Fire Chief is supposed to have an answer for that tomorrow. Yes, the building won't open to the public if that, if the fire suppression system, that's a, that's the Fire Chief's thing and he's been in contact with the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen in regards to that. And that's, we're, I mean, COVID-wise, we plan on opening June 8th if everything else is set forward. And I know the Fire Chief, June 8th, whatever I just said, but for, but he telling me earlier, the Fire Chief was that.
Carrie, I.
He has a meeting to work or whatever you, and they're supposed to be looking at it. And if they can test it correctly and be able to make it work the way it's supposed to without the pump being in place, then yes, we'll be able to open June 8th. If not, then we won't be able to open the building until the pump is in place and functioning. Brian, you have any?
Well, I, I, I guess the question I have, and we're, we're going to have to get confirmation of this from the Fire Chief, is, and I agree as far as, so COVID-19 aside, I agree with everything, and, and we talked about this, that everything that Carrie said as far as dates and four hours and, and wearing masks, et cetera. Regarding the fire pump, we absolutely cannot be up and running, even if there was no COVID-19, we could not be up and running full-time for our residents until that fire pumps, it's a fire suppression system is in place. In speaking with the Fire Chief yesterday, I was under the impression, however, that given the circumstances and kind of the, the part-time opening, if you will, that we're going to do, that we probably would be okay to do so until the fire pump suppression system is actually in and tested. So, so I, I do think, and I'll clarify this with Bob tomorrow, or we can clarify it, or Marlene can clarify it. I, I do think we will be all set if everything else from a COVID perspective is in place for the Town Hall to do a slow opening starting the week of June 8th. Whether or not that fire suppression system is up and running, I think we're going to be okay to just do our Tuesdays and Thursdays. But we'll get clarification on that and we will, of course, let the town as a But we'll get clarification on that, and we will, of course, let the town as a whole know that, one way or the other. Okay.
Right.
Carrie, did you have anything else from a Board of Health perspective that you wanted to mention?
No, I, I just, I, I'll, I'm gonna say it again, and I've said it in my weekly meetings and stuff like that. Once we set these guidelines to be put forward, they have to be followed. Everybody has to follow the same guidelines that are set. They can't do different things, can't let people in the buildings when they're not supposed to be, all of that kind of stuff. We have, we're trying to protect our employees and we're trying to protect the citizens. And I get that it's changed, and I hate being the bad guy, but if somebody's gonna do it, I guess it's gonna be stuck on me as the Board of Health, which is fine. But we've done a lot of research and a lot of time and energy has been put into this to try to make this the safest way to reopen for everybody's sake. So just that everybody can hear it now as a public meeting, that this, these are gonna be the guidelines once we say, we give the big go-ahead and move forward with this. And just, everybody needs to practice these, these rules and set, that are being set for, that's all.
Great. And I, I agree, thank you.
Want to talk to him, Brian?
Did Bob happen to hear what I said?
Yeah.
Bob, you guys, your, your computers just freezing a little bit. Ultimately, ultimately the-
Suppression system.
Okay, ultimately, the question was, Bob, whether or not the wa, the fire suppression system is up and running? Will we be able to open up part-time, basically, the week of June 8th from a, from a residence perspective? In your opinion? And I don't know if you can hear me, but you're frozen, so I don't know, the connection might not be that great at this point, or maybe because we have so many people on this link, I don't know. All right, we'll come back to Bob. Hi, Bob Wettner. Welcome back to Bob Flaherty. Because, Bob, you and Carrie are frozen, so we'll, we'll just get that question answered as far as June 8th, when, when we're getting into the swing of things.
Talking for me, for S R.
Pardon? Nothing, Bob, sorry. What, so why don't we, why don't we move on with our agenda, because we have a lot of things on there tonight? And I know our friends from the Finance Committee are here. Hi, everybody. And it, it is a little past 6:30. If we wanna, if we wanna get rolling with the, with the budget? Is that fair? Or? I don't know, we have, we have five other topics that were supposed to come before the budget here.
Let's deal, no, let's, let's deal with the Finance Committee and everybody while they're here.
Yeah.
And we can go back to those agenda items from-
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the meeting with the Finance Committee is scheduled to start at 6:30. It's 6:37. I see Darryl in the corner of my screen. Hi, Betsy. There's Diane up top, and I know Sean. Sean and Kim, I, I admitted them, so I know they're both on here as well. So-
Thank you.
We're gonna be discussing the fiscal year '21 department budget submissions. So, how are you, does anyone want to kick this off?
So, um, I guess if it's okay, we, the Finance Committee met two weeks ago to kind of go over some of the budget, some of the budget thoughts that we all had. So I, I kind of got an agenda that we can go through a little bit. It'll help keep me a little bit on task and on this. So, one of the concerns that we had as a Finance Committee, we talked with Sharon, Sharon was on our call. It appears that tax revenues, things like that, are doing okay right now. We're a little concerned about what's gonna happen in the fall or the, you know, the end of '21, you know, if COVID lasts longer, if people are out of work longer, there could be less money, you know, coming in, people having a hard time paying taxes and things like that. So, um, we also talked about state aid and what our effect would be on Hatfield, the bulk of our state aid. And please, guys, chime in, but is Chapter 70, and in talking with John Robert, he, we all pretty much think that probably Chapter 70 is gonna be held harmless, that we should be, we should be okay. Education is generally one of the last things that, that get cut out of things. So, um, before I go any further, does anybody else from the Finance Committee want to talk about either of those two items? Did I cover that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, item three. We talked, of course, we know that free cash has been approved somewhere over $500,000. We had a discussion on, you know, free cash and how to handle it. One of the things that we discussed and talked about is probably doing a bunch of capital items. Generally, free cash is used for, we use it for capital projects. This may not be the year that we use that for a capital project, depending on how our revenues come in. We may need to use it to help with budgets and things like that. So we had a discussion about the not using free cash or a lot of the free cash right away. The problem with that is once it goes to, once July 1 hits, free cash falls. To, we would have to wait, wait until it's certified again. We don't really want to do that. So we, we discussed perhaps taking a bunch of the finance reserve, taking the free cash and putting it in finance reserve so that when we come back in the fall for a follow-up town meeting, when we are more sure of what the state's doing and what we, how we as a town are doing, then we would be able to essentially spend that money then and not worry about, will Milonson Heath be done with auditing their 2020? So, um, I guess I'll stop there. Sean, or Diane, or Betsy, Ken, do you want to, did I forget anything with that? Anybody have any other thoughts?
Just to clarify one point would just be, we wouldn't have to actually come back to a town meeting to spend that money.
Correct.
If it was in finance reserve. We, I mean, we may do, come back for a town meeting anyhow, but we wouldn't have to do that, just putting that out there.
I think the important thing along those lines is, because of this conversation and because of the state of, the state of everything in the world, people will understand, if that's the route that we ultimately take, you know, I think people will understand the reason why. You know, it's nothing, nothing more than that. It's just, you know, we, we need to have access to, to the funds, but it could be that we don't know what we need them for yet, right? So.
So, in keeping with that, we, we talked about, okay, so what do we think? What, how should we budget for 2021? And so, you know, and, and that's, that's a loaded question. Level, level-funded budgets, for some, they can handle for departments such as the school. A level fund is a, is a significant cut. So that's, that's kind of a problem. But at this point in time, what we were thinking was to have at least no more than a level fund, level service budget going forward, at least preliminary. There was some discussion of even making it a 2% reduced budget. So with the idea that we regather next fall, when hopefully things are better and more pointed out, and then we can reallocate money to departments that we, that money's been taken away from. Of course, you know, that was our thought, we, our concern was, well.
Darryl, can I ask some questions about the documents that were submitted?
Please, fire away.
Okay, so anyway, first of all, I found the narratives that the department had submitted about the impact a level-funded budget would have were very helpful. So I appreciate those who submitted them. It was, it, it was exactly what I needed in order to think about this clearly. I also really appreciated the school showing us what would happen if we were to ask them to work with a level-dollar budget. And that turned into a, essentially for them, a $148,000 cut. And so they went through and very bravely tried to anticipate what they would do if they had to make that $148,000 cut. And I have a question, if John Robert is here, about one of the items they put on that list. Is John around? Let me look. Yes, John is here.
Yeah, I am here, Betsy. I am here.
Okay. Yes, I can, thank you.
I don't have my camera, but I'm here.
Okay, that's fine. So my question about the narrative that you submitted was that one of the thoughts you had was whether you would have to eliminate the second preschool teacher. Leaving one preschool teacher with both special education kids and kids without those needs. And my question about that was, would it be of any use to the school to have a teacher's aide in that classroom if you eliminated the teacher?
We, we, yeah, we, we currently do have a paraprofessional in that classroom. We have three paraprofessionals in there. We may have to put an additional paraprofessional in there if we go with just one teacher. But that's something that we would do internally, that's, that's, yeah, so that's already part of the discussion.
Okay, I just wondered about that. And then the other thing was that you mentioned that we would probably need to increase the supplies budget for facilities and maintenance, given the caution, the hygiene, the cleaning, all, all the stuff that we will need to do if we open up the school again in September. And so I don't think, I didn't look that carefully, but I don't think in your budget, I don't think you recommended an increase to supplies for facilities and maintenance.
No, actually, actually, we started cutting, a 10% cut across the board in a lot of those areas. But one of the things that we're looking right now is, we're looking at what do we need to open up the doors in September as far as whether it's, really to try to purchase as much as we can now, particularly if you can get some reimbursement through Mima, that's 75%. So we're trying to take care of that now and not have to put it into next year's budget. So we're trying to pre-purchase as much as we can now. So I've had conversations with the Board of Health, and, and our school nurse has been doing that. So we have a lot of that already, hopefully, there's a lag time in getting it, but hopefully we'll have that already in place.
Okay, good, well, that's good news, because I think you're right in anticipating we're gonna be spending more on supplies, not less. And, and so my, my general observation, just for the benefit of the rest of the Finance Committee, was after looking at all that, obviously, $148,000 would be rather devastating. But my personal opinion is, what I would like to move, what I would like to propose to the town that we move forward with, unless John thinks this is really unwieldy and unworkable, is that we go forward with level funding for all departments except the school, where the school, we would try to provide level service. And then, if we need to make changes in October or November, or November, I guess it was, when we see how our next tax round does in terms of collections, that's what I would do, is level fu, propose a level funding for all departments and a level service for the school going forward, with the understanding that come November, we may have to make significant changes. And John, just from your perspective, I, I feel like I have to ask you every question I can ever think of before you walk out the door on June 30th. I just would benefit from your perspective on, would that be harder for the school to turn around on a dime in November? Would you rather see the train coming, or would you rather be hit by the train without knowing it's coming? Uh-oh, I think I killed him.
He froze all of a sudden.
You blame the poor man. I wonder if he'll come back.
Well, I mean, just to sort of, just in general, with regard to anyone, obviously, the longer in the year you go, if you have to make changes, it becomes more and more problematic, because the changes have to be bigger.
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
Betsy, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
You're breaking up to me.
I'm very sorry. I, I blame Comcast.
I, 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 we can hear bits and pieces, but I, I'm-
Sean, can you repeat it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think the, the question is, um, I guess, would you, how would you want, like, if we have to make changes, if we had to make cuts at some point, how much more difficult would it be to do it in November or October than it would be now? I mean, this is coming up because, I guess, you know, anything is on the table. You know, you, you don't know what state aid is gonna be. You don't know, I mean, virtually anything could happen. You know, I mean, we're saying that Chapter 70 won't be cut because it's usually the last not cut, and because there's a whole bunch of reasons.
There's never a guarantee for that. Yeah. Education isn't the last thing they want to look at, but I, I'm not guaranteeing that I'm not gonna have Chapter 70 cuts, that's for sure. I can't guarantee that.
No, I don't think anyone can guarantee anything right now.
No, exactly right. So, I guess I, I'm, I'm not getting the gist of what you're asking me. I'm sorry, but there's some-
So would you rather know now, John? Would you rather know that we're gonna hit you hard now, or would you rather, rather of us find $148,000 to start the year? And then, what would happen in, say, October or November if we had to come back to you and say, oops, can't give you all that money?
Thank you.
Betsy, is that right?
That's it.
Well, there are certain, there are certain things that we would have to do now if we were making certain, if we're making cuts.
Yeah.
Some of these cuts, I mean, supplies, you, you, but as far as personnel, you know, there's certain things that we have to do by contract. And also, we're talking about scheduling. I'm looking at what we listed here. Yeah, so you're saying, if we come back in the fall, is that what you're saying, the fall, if we have to make these kind of cuts?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be the plan would, would be to, let's get a budget passed. Let's, let's keep all departments, for the most part, level-funded. Let's, you know, with the school, and, and, and let me just emphasize is, with the school, a level-funded is really a big cut. And so we're hoping this $148,000 budget increase that you, is primarily a level services budget. And go forward with that, but we, we think we would, would have to come back in the fall once we know what our state aid is, and once we know how town revenues are, you know, then we might have to make changes at that point.
Right, well, I think, John, let's be, and Darryl, correct me if I'm wrong, let, let's be clear. The, the, the question- The, the, the question that the finance committee is asking is if we had had to come back in the fall, not that we will come back in the fall.
Well, I would assume, I would assume, Brian, that we will come back with another town meeting in the fall.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, but, and you are right. It is my hope, and I'm a glass half-full type of guy, that once we come back in the fall, that we don't have to make any further cuts, that we would be able to hopefully bolster some budgets that need money. Sean?
Well, I, I think, we, I do want to say, we, we do have, I believe, two, I, I believe the chair of the school committee is, is here as well tonight. And I certainly would invite Heather to, to give her thoughts on this as well as, um, and, and I believe maybe Jill, who's part of our budget subcommittee, uh, as well. Um, but, um, I would say that if we were to proceed with a, with what you call a level service budget, we would have to anticipate that we may be cutting in the fall. And I think that at that point, then I would advise the committee to have, uh, basically proceed with two budgets. One, that would be level service, and then also have a, can have a budget ready, have, have a plan ready, uh, to, uh, have to potentially make some changes. And I think that's where we'd have to proceed. So we'd have to know what the, you know, so it, it, it makes budgeting a little more demanding for us. It makes us, our planning a little bit more demanding. And of course, I know the new, the new superintendent is also listening in as well tonight, too.
Right.
So, um.
So, John, can I just ask?
Darryl? I, I would just.
Sorry, Sean, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I, I'm, I'm just a little, I'm concerned about sort of the, I guess, about really sort of cutting things in the dark. You know, like, we really have no idea what the revenue problem is or isn't, um, at this point. Um, and if collections literally become an issue, that, uh, who, who can guess what the scope of that could be or, or might be? So I don't, you know, I, I kind of looking at that as a worst-case scenario and would just have to adapt at that point. But like, trying to figure it out now is guessing, essentially.
Right.
Right, I agree with you, Sean. I would prefer not to guess now.
Yeah. Right.
I mean.
And I think that's why we wanted, we, we felt most comfortable with a level funded budget and then letting the school proceed with the budget that they approved, which is the, you know, with, with the additional $148,000 at this point.
Right, right. We would, we, I would just say that we would, we would just know to be prepared that that may be reduced in the, in the, in the fall. And, and I, I think that, that we're hearing that clearly, that we would have to, uh, yeah, and, and how we would, how we would plan going ahead.
Right.
Um, yeah, okay. So we, yeah, and the school committee have been meeting again on Thursday as well. So it'll certainly be discussing, discussing that as well. So even if, yeah, so I would say that, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And I know, I, I, like I said, there are some school committee members, I know, that are listening tonight. I don't know if they want to share their thoughts, but, uh, you know, we, we would certainly have that in the back of our mind, that, that we may be making adjustments in the fall.
I don't know if people can hear me, but I guess the, the one point Sean made about proceeding that way is that come November, if we find ourselves short a lot of money, then you might not have to cut just two positions. You might have to cut four positions in order to make up the, the, the difference in a reduced timeline. That's the one downside.
Yeah. Yeah. Abs, absolutely. Good point. Um, yeah, so, so that, hopefully, everyone is kind of on board with that. Um, we know that's a bit hard on the other departments and we, we do feel badly about that. But we not really sure at this point how re, we really can, um, go forward. We know there are certain things that will have to be paid. Marlene, like insurance and things like that, that go up no matter what. So that money will have to be paid no matter what. Um, wages, you know, are that, that go to, um, you know, you know, our, our unions, whether the school, the DPW, those, those will have to be met. Um, it's probably worth a discussion, um, to talk about, you know, some years, we, we, we try to offer, you know, a couple percent to the non-union, um, portion. And maybe we could make it the non-union, non-contracted, not to separate them, but the contracted ones do have the opportunity to sit down with the board or whoever it is that gives them the contract and they, they can negotiate that. And others don't have, exactly have that. So I kind of throw that out there. We appreciate what our town employees have done, uh, in the past year and especially now, when, you know, we want to, we, we certainly don't want to, um, uh, take it off their back. So I don't know. Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Anybody on the finance committee first, on, on how we should address some of that?
Darryl, can I pipe in? It's Lydia.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to remind the board that, um, the, well, the town clerk's budget, you know, whatever, but the election budget I submitted for elections increased from last year. It has to because we have more elections in FY21 than we did in FY20. So it is what it is. So it, you know, I, I prepare my budget based on how many elections.
Right. Lydia, we can't hear you.
Maybe I muted.
There you go.
Now you can hear.
Okay. Maybe it, even what I submitted might not, depending on the COVID and supplies I might have to buy for early voting. You know, if there's a lot more mail-in early voting. I mean, usually you get about 2,000 people voting in the presidential election and, and, you know, doing like a thousand mail-in votes. That's, you know.
Do you think, though, that there's a possibility? It seems like there's a possibility the law could change around that, too, to make it easier to do? And that we might, we might, I mean, there's proposals out there.
Right, and, and there's legislation coming down. You know, every other day, there's more legislation. It's, you have to try to keep up with it all.
Right, so I mean, it's hard to know what the actual cost of this could be. It's also hard to know, I mean, the state may also, if, if they change the rules in a significant way, may also provide some relief for that.
Right, right. That's, that's, you know, we can, we can always hope that, you know.
Right.
Happens, but I'm just, you know, the election budget is what it is and I, you know.
Right, and, and I think.
But we're, we're also, that's also a small amount of money. Right? I mean, we're not talking about $150,000. We're talking about a smaller amount of money that maybe, but I, I'm, I'm just saying.
We, we can, we can fix that in the fall.
Yes.
That, that's something that can be fixed down the road.
Right. Okay, but can I, this is Betsy. Can I ask a question? Marlene, do you remember, or maybe Sharon, do you remember what the total dollar amount is if we were to give the non-union staff a 2% increase? It's not a lot of money. It's like.
It's not much.
Oh, Betsy, are you there?
Yes.
Can you see me? Okay, I can look it up.
I, I've turned my video off in the hopes of expanding my bandwidth.
I meant, really, could you hear me is what I.
I can hear you, yes.
I can look that up in just a sec because I'm sitting at my computer. So keep going and I'll come back in a sec.
I, I, I'm recalling some relatively small number, like around $10,000.
Right. Yeah.
I don't have that in front of me. And if that were the case, you know, it's sort of, I, I'm open to all suggestions here, but if we're going to go forward, I would want to go forward with that proposed 2% increase within our operating budget now. Um.
Right.
Because I don't know if, if we want to use our free cash for that down the line.
Yeah, I, you know, and the hard part, Betsy, is we haven't really put in all this on a spreadsheet. And so we, we don't really know.
We don't really know.
We don't really know, but I, you know, we're talking generally. I agree with you and, and I personally would like to see that part of us going forward. I think it sends a good message to the people in town, so.
Yeah, and, and the problem, once again, exactly as it would be with the school, is if we get to November and we're really down on revenue, then, then the, the cuts are going to be even more fierce and that will be more painful than a little bit of cutting now. So I, I don't know.
Right.
I'm back.
Thank you.
The, uh, two, I think we did a 2% last year.
Yeah.
2% turned into $16,000.
$16,000. That sounds about right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And by only, I would just, as I said, I'm got the camera for a sec. I did an update of where we are to date and motor vehicle excise, we're at 86% collection. Real estate, we're at 92%. Water sewer is low at 78, um, and personal property is low, but that's one, one person bringing all of that down. So the only thing we're kind of down on collections for FY20 is water sewer. So just for an update while I've, while you got me.
And the other question, Sharon, is when is it we find out about the cost of health insurance?
That is going to be level funded. Um, like Lydia did, we have a couple budget lines that can't, you know, or retirement, for example. Yeah, the number is, is, but, um, health insurance premiums did not go up. So that is level funded also.
Also in January of 2021?
Yep, so the rate is set for July 1 and goes till June 30 of next year.
And there's no increase?
No increase.
Wow.
So that was, there was a, it was painful last year with the premium changes and not really premium, what am I looking for, um, copays, deduction premiums.
Yeah, deductions.
That changed last year, but in doing that, we won't have a change and hopefully for a whole nother year. That's the hope, that they cha, they did enough of a improvement that it'll last for a while.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
So, so maybe at this point, um, we should talk about, you know, Mar, Marlene, you know, can, maybe you and I can talk on the phone or whatever, but we ought to put some of these numbers on our spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Um, and, and put this forward so, so, you know, so we can, we can look at, you know, if, if we can actually do this. Uh, we can make some, some rough assumptions, but, um, that would, at least for the budget per purposes, if we all are in general agreement with what we've talked about, I think, you know, let's put that on paper and let's see what it looks like. Because I, you, you know, and then we'll have to find those things that we have to pay no matter what. Um, um, it, anyway.
Yes.
Finance committee, are you on board with that?
That would be helpful, Darryl, because right now, we don't know what percentage of our 2.5% increase. You know, I mean, we don't, we don't know how much money we are forced to spend for any additional revenue. I have no idea what that number is. So it would be helpful to know, are we being forced to bring, you know, to cough up $20,000, $100,000? I mean, I, I have no idea.
Right, right, okay. So as far as budgeting going, you know, Marlene, let's see, let's, let's back from the, the town meeting is June 23rd. Is that correct?
June 16th.
June 16th, okay. So do you think if we met a week from tonight, that we could have some numbers on the spreadsheet that we can all look at? And then we'll have a better idea, at least this is the operating budget that, you know, of, of, a way forward with the operating budget?
Yes, I will make that work.
Finance committee and Board of Selectmen, is that reasonable? That we re, you know, for that, those purposes, we try to reconvene a week from tonight and talk about that?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
Okay. So I just want to go on to a couple other items, Brian, if, if you'll let me.
Yeah, please, please do, Darryl.
Uh, we had a discussion about capital purchases. Um, and I, I, I think Sean, Sean, maybe you can kind of lead this, but we had a little bit of, there was a somewhat of a priority list on that. And I, I believe we kind of, for the most part, decided unless it, unless we, it really had to be done, that we could wait until the fall on making decisions on most projects that, to, am I correct, Sean?
Uh, yeah, I can't think of anything. I mean, I, you know, I mean, obviously, when we had the conversations about it, that this wasn't part of it, you know, like.
Right.
The idea of what happens if. Um, but I can't think of anything on that list that, you know, like, couldn't wait till fall, quite honestly, that we're going to do.
Right.
Or could possibly do.
Yeah.
Freezer at the, at the school.
Well, I brought that up last week and John indicated that that was not as critical as I thought it was. So that was the one thing I thought prior, but I don't think that now, I guess.
Uh, can I chime in on that?
Yeah.
Right.
Please.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I don't recall, I said it wasn't as critical. I mean, it, I, I guess I would, maybe I said is that it's been, it's been something we've been asking for, for a long, long time. And I hate to go on record and say it's not critical and have the thing break next week, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, nobody can predict when it might break, obviously. I mean.
I know. I can tell you, it's, it's original to the building. It's probably in the top of our list of concerns, but, you know, and, and, and with everything going on right now, you know, will it last another year? It's, 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 who knows? I really don't know. I, yeah, that's, that's the whole gist of it.
Well, and kind of the hope is, John, you know, maybe once we get to the fall and we, maybe we got some extra money and free cash and stuff like that, we can address, dress something like that. It's certainly, as far as what I saw from the capital list, it's kind of on the top of that, that list, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, yeah, I think the, the, um, the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department, the, uh, the freezer for the school, those were sort of the top things. This, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm on capital planning and I, I would agree with that, Sean, that assessment.
Okay.
Thank you, Diana.
Thanks, Diana. So, so the, I guess I have two more things. One is the, and, uh, is we talked about the impacts of the loans, um, especially as it relates to the Route 5, 5 and 10 sewer project. Um, it's my understanding that that is on the warrant as a debt exclusion. Um, there's a little bit of concern by us, the finance committee, if for some reason it's not voted for, either at town meeting or at the ballot box, we would have to reconvene pretty quickly as a town to, to do it as just a general borrowing in order, because we certainly don't want to let that money slip out of our fingers. And so the discussion we had is, is there a way to protect ourselves? Can we put it on as a debt exclusion and as a general borrowing? So if it fails as a debt exclusion, we can do it as a general borrowing.
Wow. And then that can be added, that, that can be added. Um, I, I would suggest that it be a separate article and not locked in with the, yeah, because it muddy, it would muddy that article.
No, separate, because when you write that article, really, all you're writing is authorization to borrow.
That's correct.
So if the project gets done through a debt exclusion, you don't need author, you don't need to borrow and you won't do it.
Right.
We can't borrow twice for the same project, so.
Right.
It seems like a, a, you know, worthwhile insurance policy for a grant as large as that, that we just can't risk losing. Particularly when you think about the long-term financial benefit to the town.
Absolutely. Okay, so the last thing, and maybe finance committee members have other items. I know, um, Betsy and. I know, um, Betsy and you and Marlene, um, listened, and we all had the chance to listen to that presentation on Clear Government or whatever. Um, would, would either of you want to speak about that? And what we're thinking about, what, what, what your thoughts are on that? Is that something that we should pursue, or is that something we should wait? Anyway.
Um, I'm just going to respond to the email that Marlene sent about that, which is that there may be other software alternatives that are even better. But I have to say that from my amateur perspective, um, the software they were presenting, which would enable department heads to submit their budget proposals and for us to review those budget proposals, um, and also to make notes about what we decide and why we decided it, so that we can read it again next year, when we wonder why it was we did what we did. Um, I think would be incredibly helpful. I am not wedded to this particular software, but I think, Marlene, that we should look at some kind of budgeting software.
Yes. I agree.
I think using Justin's old macros in old Excel spreadsheet scares me a little.
I, I, I agree. I, I think that a budget module would be very helpful. Uh, and, and I, I would recommend that we, we look at other options, but I certainly don't want to, um, you know, dismiss Clear Gov's proposal. I, I'd still like to, to, you know, keep it as an option.
Well, Marlene, I would leave that in your hands to move that forward in, in whatever timely fashion you think that decision needs to be moved forward. But my personal reaction was that, as a member of the Finance Committee, it would be much simpler to review budgets accurately and in some reasonable year-to-year factor, if we had software like that.
Yes. Yes, I, I thoroughly enjoyed the demonstration, and, and I think that, um, that's just, just what the town needs.
Yeah. It really made it so much easier from my perspective.
I spoke with someone today, uh, it's a larger municipality, but they're very happy with that, with that budget module.
Okay.
All right, great, um, all right. Betsy, Sean, Kim, Diane, what, what else do we?
Just ask an update question?
Yeah.
Do, do we, um, so, you know, I mean, we have, um, I'm sort of thinking maybe more about next year, but, um, we have potentially other free cash out there. But do we know if we've resolved any of the questions that are holding it up?
Uh, the, the items that I have put forward on the warrant, I reviewed with Malonson Heath, those are, are older items, and certainly the accountant recommends that, um, if, if we can take care of these as opposed to, um, hitting, hitting free cash for fiscal year '20, it's better to do that. But they do agree that some of the other items, we, we should be looking into those, and, and we will be. Actually, Malonson Heath is supposed to come by later this week. Um, we're gonna have some, uh, they're gonna meet with the Treasurer Collector's Office and myself.
So, what items are we talking about cleaning up?
Um, let me just get that list.
Is it the $60,000, the, that's been running?
School lunch.
So, the, so the proposed, uh, article. Let me just take a look, I think it's. So, it's on the warrant, draft warrant that I sent to you, it's, it's the new Article 5.
Yeah.
There's a $100,000, $100,116.60 worth of, uh, these are our special, special projects.
Okay.
And it's, you said it's on the warrant?
Yes. Article 5. It's the new Article 5, because if you look at, um, it was a prior article.
Yeah.
He's, I'm going to remove that. Um, I had just left it there, because the Board of Selectmen should be aware of the reason why I'm asking to remove it.
Okay. Are we gonna be ready to do this at this town meeting?
Uh, well, if we don't take care of it at this town meeting, I mean, that's certainly, you know, your, your call. If we don't take care of it at this town meeting, then, um, when, when we close out fiscal year '20, this will hit free cash.
Okay, so.
So, it'll remain on that.
Can you tell me what the dollar amount, so, so is this $100,000 we have to come up with, or is this just cleaning up things?
It's cleaning up.
So, essentially, we would transfer, we would journal it? What does cleaning up mean?
Yeah.
We have to, these are deficits that we have to fund.
So, we, so, so in other words, we have to come up with $100,116.60?
Correct.
So, so can I, just for the sake of argument, why would we fix them?
Yeah.
Why not let them hit next year's free cash?
Exactly.
That we can't spend now anyway, because DOR is holding on to it?
Because by, by next year, you will be able to spend it. It means that when we do free cash again, we're gonna have to take another hit for it again.
I, I understand, but, well, we're not taking another hit, we're only taking one hit.
Same hit.
Well, we.
Same hit.
Yeah. But we'll take it again, we need finally just clean some of these things up and say, okay.
Right, but then what I'm saying is, if, if we can push it down, I mean, DOR is already holding, what, $600,000? But maybe, depending on what we actually owe.
Right.
So, or where we might actually have deficits, I shouldn't say. So, if we kick it down the road, they're gonna be, it's gonna take a $100,000 hit out of next year's free cash, potentially. But we, but that's already being held, we can't use that right now anyway.
Well, but come October, we should have the audit done, because now we're getting up on track, so you're gonna have to have it held from the money, you know, that we would have gotten in October, November this year.
Can I just?
Right, except for now, we're gonna have to come up with the money.
Right, I, I think in this instance, this, as, as we've all said in the, in the past, we don't like kicking the can down the road. However, to Sean's point, given the circumstances of the unknown right now, I think the $100,000 is better in our hand than it is to, to not be in our hand. That, that would be where I would come from on this particular topic. Because what, what's the advantage, other than we're now gonna be $1,000 short over the next few months versus, you know?
Can I just weigh in for a second, too?
Let Sharon finish, please, Joe. Go ahead, Sharon, what were you gonna say?
From our perspective and the accountants, because I went over the whole list with the accountant last week and trying to figure out some of the numbers, and the idea is, we don't know what else is going to surface, unfortunately. So, we may even have a bigger problem if we don't start to do a little bit here and a little bit there. That was their thought process, was if we can take care of some of this and get it off the books, we know that this problem's resolved, because they're still gonna, you know, have to work, do a lot of work to finish '20 and catch up, you know, all of these other issues we may or may not face.
Right.
That was the thought from their suggestion.
So, so I guess my question is, like, with the preschool, how, I mean, don't people pay for the preschool? How are we a $40,000 deficit in the preschool line? I don't get that.
Because we think that there's still things that are, are booked incorrectly. And so, for example, let's use mine that I can speak to, I can't speak to preschool fabulously, but you can see a line that says $170,000 for tax lien receivables, right? And then you see one right above it that says real estate. Those numbers, one of them's really a negative and one's a positive. So, once we do all the research and prove everything out in FY '20, we're gonna have somewhat of a, a variance there, because we know Justin and unfortunately, I hate to, to keep blaming that, wasn't booked properly. So, all of that will come back, because they'll even out. So, we want to leave the things that we know we have to still do the research on, and that way, we've got a good accountant firm now that can say, okay, we're gonna tear this apart and get to the bottom of it. And then we can say, okay, there really is a preschool or there's not, because John has always maintained that that account should never have been in that kind of a deficit.
Right.
And so then, so then, doesn't that also beg the question of why would we take care of this now? If we're still waiting for some of this to shake out?
Because these ones, they've already done that with, and they're.
Oh, I thought you just said preschool you didn't know.
Preschool, I don't know, but the ones, what, some of the ones she's talking about, they've already done. I don't have that, it's in my pile here.
Well, preschool's on the list.
Well.
Correct, and, and some of these go back, you know, two, three years ago. Um, and, you know, it was how and, and when the accountant, um, when accounting posted it and, and where it was posted. You know, we, we're almost sure that some of these, some of these numbers, these deficits, were, were posted to other accounts, definitely not to the correct account.
Right.
So, we know, we know a few years ago, we were looking at a, a high number of, of receipts posted to miscellaneous revenue. And, and, and that's very possible, that that's where some of these went. But those years have been closed out, we can't change that.
So, maybe preschool's a bad example, in that they have done enough research on that, where some of the others, I mean, that page, I don't have that page in front of me, they, I know that there's still work to be done. And we, you know, Marlene and myself had the call with them last week to say, okay, which ones of these can we tackle next?
But, yeah, and the list I'm looking at, Sharon, is just on the, on, on the warrant. So, it says, doesn't have your stuff, so.
The list from last week, where we got the free cash authorization, the one that came from DOR that said this is what they're holding, that's the one that had the big, you know, the big-ticket items on it.
Right.
Right, the, my understanding is, the, the items on the warrant are older.
These are old.
There's, there's no research left to do.
They've been there before, correct.
We've been carrying them for multiple years.
Yes.
I under, yeah, I understand.
Okay, so none of these will resolve themselves.
Right.
With corrections by Malonson Heath.
That is correct. Based on my conversation with the accountant last week, he's, yes.
And so, for us to take care of these, our choice would be taxation or free cash, or, or do we, or, or, or do we take it out of long-term savings? Because it's a long-term problem.
But I'm kind of with Sean here, I mean, why would we spend $100,000 of our free cash when we need, might need that money just to keep our town afloat right now?
Right, no, I agree with you, Betsy. I don't agree that we do it out of free cash, but if we're gonna do it, the only way we do it out is, is, you know, take it out of our, our long-term savings or whatever.
Stabilization?
Huh?
You talking about stabilization?
Stabilization.
Can I, can I just make a comment here on?
Go ahead, Joe.
We're talking about all these articles, and when I talk to other town moderators that have recently had their, their town meetings, which are being held outside because of this, um, generally, 10 to 11, maybe 12 articles get through with people standing outside, feeling incredibly uncomfortable. And you've got a Board of Selectmen and a Finance Committee in a town, trying to get some of the most basic articles passed so that they can continue forward as a town and not have to take up a 1/12 budget every single month going forward. You've got, and, and luckily, you know, I see here, there's 23 articles. Um, even though that's a very slimmed-down, uh, uh, list of articles, you know, we're gonna be lucky to get through 10 or 12 before people standing in different positions outside the pavilion at 7 o'clock at night are not gonna have the patience to go through all 23 articles. So, each town, each board, as I've mentioned to some of you, is, we're gonna have, I mentioned to Marlene, we're gonna have to slim down and hold off anything we can that won't stop the town from operating until the fall, when we can meet. So, here you are, talking for 10 or 15 minutes on something that either could wait, it's gonna cost us one way or the other, but I don't think we've got the time that night to discuss that whole thing you're talking about now and have people be able to vote some of our most basic articles through on the 16th.
Good point. Well, and not only that, but we could deal with this in the fall, when a, more of the financial picture is clear, so.
You guys, you guys have to pull things out of this 23 articles and try to pare it down to maybe 10 or 12. I can do a consent agenda for Article 1, 2, 3, 4 and wipe that one out very quickly. But, man, you're, you're not gonna have people stand outside from 7 to 9 o'clock.
With the mosquitoes.
Exactly.
Right.
So, that's why I like the idea of when you say, a level-funded, level-services budget, people can grasp that. It's not gonna change, it's the same, pretty much the similar budget they voted last year, with the exception of the school. They might accept that very quickly, but, you know, we've got some, there might be a board or two that have something that absolutely needs to be voted through at this meeting. There's my two cents.
I, I agree, I think it seems like, be outside the scope of this budget, most financial stuff shouldn't be dealt with.
But at least if you have the 23 articles, you can have the whole list of articles, but it's just that just before town meeting time is, you're gonna, you guys are gonna have to do like you did last year and pick a certain number of them and just table them till the fall. You can still keep your warrant in full load, but many of these things are just gonna have to be tabled till we can meet safely in, in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. I'm okay with that.
Makes sense to me. I agree.
So, from a Finance Committee, is there anything else that we need to, I know the Selectmen have quite an agenda to, to, to go through. Do we have anything else that we need to discuss tonight? So, so, Marlene, I'll, we'll be in touch and we'll plan, can we plan next Tuesday at 6:30 to review, um, hopefully, the operating budget? And I was gonna ask, you know, Justin had his spreadsheet, I don't know what spreadsheet we're gonna work with. Can we get some help from Malonson Heath on this?
Well, that's the one I'm, I'm, I'm working with, um, for, for, for this, this, this year, anyway.
Oh, do we, I'm sorry, which one, is the one we're working with?
The one that we worked with last year, that Justin had, but I, actually, I, I am working with Malonson Heath as well. I've asked them to take a look at the numbers, and they're, they're, they're glad to, to help out. I mean, they, they certainly made it clear that they didn't wanna play a large role in the development of the, the budget, and I understand that, but, um, but they are still, you know, willing to, to look at the numbers. As I've always said, there needs to be another set of eyes looking at that.
Yeah, and we, we certainly want to make sure the numbers are, are right and we don't miss something like we did a few years ago with the snow and ice thing and things like that. Okay.
Okay.
Sean, you guys have anything else?
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm all set. Thank you, Finance Committee.
Yeah.
No, I, I was just, I was gonna echo Diana and Ed's comment, which was simply to thank you guys and, and for everything you've done in the separate meetings I know you're having. So, we will plan on next Tuesday, the 26th, um, to reconvene the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. We'll have more information regarding the, um, the spreadsheet, the budget to work from, as well as we should have another week under our belt with Malonson Heath and, you know, and just the finances and where we stand, so.
Right.
You know, and, and we can discuss, to Joe's point, maybe we can discuss some of those articles that evening, too, if, if we have time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to ask that question, Brian, are you gonna go through those articles tonight, or are we gonna do that next week?
Well, we, I mean, it's on our agenda, but if you guys are, um, I mean, you, we all have a copy of it. So, if we're really not gonna make, I, I don't know, but it doesn't matter to me, whatever, whatever the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen want to do.
I would suggest we take it up next week.
Okay.
I, I admit to not having spent enough time looking at this, and so, this. I, I admit to not having spent enough time looking at this. And so this gives me another week to look at it and.
You don't have it all memorized, Darryl?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. It's not as good as you.
I didn't say I had it memorized. I got the sheet right in front of me. Okay.
Let's try to keep, let's try to keep next Tuesday really dedicated just to the budget and the warrant.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Diana. Good point.
Yep.
Alright.
So, uh, not from a board, for my personal self on the Board of Selectmen, I have no other questions of, of the Finance Committee other than to just once again, thank you guys for, for everything. I don't know if Diana or Ed has anything.
I'm all set.
Okay. Ed, did you have anything for the Finance Committee at this point?
No, not at this point. Uh, thank you for all the effort you put into this.
No, thank you guys.
All right. Thank you, Darryl. Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Alright.
Right. Thank you, Finance Committee.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, Board of Selectmen, hang on though.
Oh, you mean we're not done?
No, we are far from it. Okay. So, alright. I'm just looking at my agenda over here, which is why my head's turned. So, um, if we go back towards the top. Um, and I think we alluded a little bit to it in the beginning, but not directly. Uh, under topic two, we have the, um, talk about the 350th parade being rescheduled.
I can speak to that if you want.
Sure. Thank you. I, I think Ed might be on here too, or he was earlier at, um, Ed Lesko. I don't know. But as long as somebody from the committee maybe can speak to it, we'd appreciate it.
Um, well, I mean, I, I'll, I'll do it. Um, so it was clear to the, to the committee, um, that it would not be appropriate or probably safe. To hold the parade as scheduled on June 13th. It just wouldn't be allowed and it just wouldn't be appropriate. So after much consideration and, and a lot of, um, debate back and forth about different ways we could do this. We did, um, decide to reschedule the parade to May 30th, excuse me, 2021. We think it's going to lend itself to a, a much bigger event, um, in a time when we're feeling more like celebrating things, uh, than we do right now. And, um, it's also, May 30th happens to be the very last day of our actual 350th year. So we're still actually squeezing it into that actual 350th year. But I think to do the parade justice, to do our sponsors' justice and to show off, um, this town and how people love this town. Uh, the best thing to do was to reschedule it. So, um, we hope everybody will mark their calendars for, um, May 30th, 2021. Other events are staying on the calendar. A few have been postponed. We're trying to keep the fall things on the calendar. Obviously this is always evolving and we're staying on top of this. On, on an ongoing basis. And so we'll communicate to the town any other information that they need. But I really want to thank, um, Michael Pash, Chick Paul Abbey, um, and, and Bobby Betzel and all the, Eddie Lesko. All of the members who are on this committee because, um, you know, this has been an enormous curve ball thrown at us after three years of planning. And, um, but we're just, we're just going to move on and, and not let it get us down and, and still give the, the townspeople the party they deserve.
That's great. Thanks, Diana. And I, I echo your sentiments, um, for everybody being able to sort of, uh, put on the brakes and, and regroup and, and do what's, uh, what's safest for, for the people and, and still have a, have a great, uh, a bunch of great events that are coming up. So.
You know, I'll say overall, um, in fact, I could say really 100% townspeople, um, have been really supportive of this change. I think because they do know it's the right thing to do and they know that it will probably be a lot more fun, um, next year when we can, when we can do it right.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you. So I, I, Bob Wagner, I, I see you're on and I don't know if we're, we've kind of been skipping around some of the, the next, uh, agenda items have to do with appointments and resignations. So Bob, did you want to speak to the, uh, the proposed agricultural policy? Just, uh, I know you're on the agenda and, and that was something we were just asking, I think, for some clarification from you.
Sure, that's fine, Brian. Um, yeah, so I brought this to the committee, uh, to the Select Board a, a few meetings ago. And by way of, uh, explanation or background, the State Department of Agriculture, uh, their Agricultural Preservation Restriction Program. It allows farmers to voluntarily sell a conservation restriction on their farm. To permanently protect, uh, their operation and their farm into the future. Darryl Williams and his family, for example, have done this. We have about 500 acres in town right now that have been protected this way. The state, uh, for the last 10 years or so expects a contribution from the local community. When, uh, there is a project in that town. And it can be as high as 20% or as low as 5%. And the way you get it down to 5% is to do three things. One is to have an ag commission, which we have, to have a, uh, right to farm bylaw, which we have. And to have a tracking system so that, um, any agricultural preservation restriction that's in town is identified, uh, in the records. Which I know Jen does, uh, in the assessor's records, but that we make it clear, uh, to the building inspector and, and to the planning board. That when someone comes in and wants to get a project approved on a property that may have an, an ag preservation restriction on it, that that's known. That, um, it, we're all aware of the fact that this restriction is on the property and that to do anything more on the property. Building a new house or building our buildings requires the approval of the state. Or if it's a conservation restriction held by a local land trust, it often requires the approval of the land trust. So they want a tracking system set up so that there's no, nothing falls through the cracks, so to speak. And so what I presented to the board a, a month and a half or two months ago. Is, is a tracking policy that would conform with what the state is expecting. And if we can implement this, and I'm more than willing to, identifying all the properties that, uh, this red flag would be placed on, if you will. Then we would complete the three items that are required for us to, um, to be able for only a 5% match for any future ag preservation restriction purchases in the, in the town.
So can I, I just, and, and, and obviously, so that's a great benefit, but it's also, I mean, we should be tracking that. I'm shocked that we haven't been tracking this. Doesn't this go on record in the Registry of Deeds and APR restriction?
Yeah, it does. Uh, but.
So would it matter if it's a deeds?
Well, if, if someone's doing it, if someone, so it, the issue comes not so much with the current owner and the person sold the restriction or donated the restriction. It comes up when the property is sold. A conservation restriction. And, or an APR for that reservation restriction. But if the person doesn't take a home, wants to build a new home, um, then they may not, um, they may not do it. There is this restriction on the property. Uh, they may look at, okay, you've got 200 feet of frontage, you've got an acre parcel. Uh, yeah, I can give you a building permit because you have all, you meet all the necessary requirements. State is trying to make sure that. And, and I think as I mentioned at the last meeting, I can speak, uh, to some experience because as I think many of you know. I worked for American Trust for many years. In California where the farm was sold after protected. That, I think it might've even been the second owner after, after the farm was protected. And the gentleman who bought it, uh, knew there was a restriction on the property, but, um, bought the property. He had a discount because it had an easement on it. And he went to the county, uh, building inspector after they could get him permitted because the building inspector never really looked into the records. Building was going to be stepped back, the right requirement, all of that. And the next thing we found out was that there was a big, uh, house being built on, uh, on the, uh, on the property.
Yeah, you, you mentioned that straight to us last time. Um, I mean, I'm all, this is, this seems like a, a no brainer. Like obviously we have to do this. I guess I'm just surprised that we weren't tracking them, particularly because they are a matter of record at the Registry of Deeds. So I guess I thought that information would be, um, part of the town's record. Um, and the town has, um, some involvement in the parcel going into APR, so we would have knowledge of it. Right?
Well, we do. I mean, Jen does have a notation on the property. I think they're hoping is, is that, you know, like sometimes when you, uh, you know, you're filling it out, out an application. We can build something like that into our systems for both the building inspector, anybody else who's goes on. Clear that there's movement on this property who holds easement. And then, um, as, as I noted in, in the, uh, in the, in the, uh, example would require or after we require that the owner, you know, uh, verify that they have necessary approvals from or the State Department of, uh, Department of Markets.
Thanks, Bob. So, so what is the, what is the ask tonight? I mean, you need the board to, um, you, you're looking to have the board approve this? Are you looking for our approval to then to take it to a next step on your end? Does this ultimately need any sort of town meeting approval or is it just the Board of Selectmen? You should know, by the way, Bob, we're having a really hard time hearing you, by the way, or at least I am. I don't know if everybody else.
Right. Yes.
Bob, could you shut your camera off maybe and just go with the, with the, um, the sound? Maybe the bandwidth will, will help you. Thank you.
Alright, let me, uh.
I mean, Brian, and I'm, can I just say one thing?
Yes, please. Yes, please do, Diana.
No, I, I mean, I'm fine with this draft as presented. Um, in number two, um, where it says the planning board group will require that any request for an, an approval not required designation. Be accompanied by a statement from the applicant certifying that the property is not under APR. I mean, wouldn't we want to check that? Another avenue? I mean, he's telling, you're telling us a story about somebody who, who they had an APR and, and built a house. Um, so wouldn't you want to check that somewhere beyond just the applicant saying that they're, they don't have one?
Well, I, I guess, I mean, if we had more staff, that would be easy for us to spend. I mean, we're, you know. I, I guess I was thinking that in this case, the applicant, um, can, and, um, you know, they should be able to be, uh, identify that. We can always do the background research. You know, have that kind of staff necessarily. Always do that and people change on the person. Um, I, I was thinking I had that policy and it would give the requirement that the landlord, uh, identify. You know, if they're requesting, you know, there's no restrictions on it. I can't, uh, get, I can, um, I was saying before, but I'm not able to get to where I cut out.
I guess my, my point is that if we're, I, I'm under the impression we're going to do an inventory of APR in town. Right? So we're going to have an actual list of what APR land exists in town. And it's not something that you're seeing happen a lot, particularly lately. So I would think once we have the inventory done and we agree to update it as parcels do go into APR, it should be pretty easy to check that.
Did we lose Bob?
I wonder if we lost the connection with him. Yeah.
It does say he left. Yes, he, he must have gotten, uh, lost his signal.
Yeah. I think he was reporting from the Cape. So I, I just like to add, if, if it's okay, we had asked Bob if, if he could come back again. Cause I know Diana, you had some, some questions or, uh, regarding number two. And, and number three, actually, that is a, a step in the process that we have been following for, for some time whenever the town is notified. My office, you know, generally follows up with the planning board, conservation, ag committee and open space.
Yeah, and my question had actually been with number three on the right of first refusal part.
I thought it was number two. Okay.
So I guess I just, I'm, I mean, this, this is pretty straightforward. I just want to add that once we have this inventory done, this isn't something that happens a lot or changes a lot. So once we have this inventory of parcels, it should be pretty easy for either the building inspector or someone in the assessor's office or whoever, you know, to check these things before anything is allowed to happen on property, this type of property seems. So that's all. That's my two cents. Other than that, I'm fine with this.
Yeah, I think this would.
So I'm not asking for any changes. I'm just pointing out that we're not talking about a program that's in, I don't think we've put any land in APR in Hatfield in years.
Uh, I thought we did just maybe two years ago.
Maybe, but I'm, I'm, it's not something that happens so constantly.
No.
It would be hard to update a, an inventory once it exists.
Right. It, it's not very often.
Right. Hi, it's Bob again. I got knocked off. Um, I've actually done that in inventory. And I, again, and I haven't had a chance to get together to, um, compare. I can modify that number two, um, if you want. I was just sort of following along with what the state had offered as sort of a sample.
I mean, I, I just feel like that there should be something that is, uh, some type of fail-safe within the town that, you know, we have town employees or town officials that are checking this. And it's not just the certification of, of an owner or a developer.
Well, so, so here's the thing. The, the first item, I'm sorry, I don't have the document right because where I am right now. But I think that the first item. You know, that.
I can't, I can't hear him, Brian.
Yeah, Bob, it's a, Bob, it's a, it's a tough connection. That we're unable to, your, your voice is all garbled for lack of a better.
Yeah.
Word.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is the first time I've ever used my crew's, uh, team. Your way to call in on a regular phone?
We can actually hear you now.
Yeah.
So why did I work with Mar- Marlene to modify this number two? But we would like to get your endorsement of this. I don't think this needs town meeting approval. It's just an internal policy.
Okay. So, and I think that's fine. When, when you had dropped, um, Diana and I and, and Ed hadn't. When, when you had dropped, Diana and I and Ed hadn't said anything yet, but we, I think we were at the point where we were probably all three of us, and I don't mean to speak for either of my colleagues. I think we're on board with having something in place. I think the question was, Ed, for number two at least, why leave it up to somebody to come before us? With, you know, we should already have the information somewhere, whether it's in the building inspector's office or, or what have you, right? That's, again, not that somebody wouldn't be honest, they just might not know. So, go ahead, Diana.
So, shouldn't this just, it could very simply, number two should just say the planning board will require that any request for an approval not required designation be accompanied by a statement from the assessor's office. I mean, that's where it should come from, not from the applicant. That the, that the property is not under APR. Is it appropriate for the assessor's office to do that? Or what?
Yeah.
Or the ag commission? Whoever is the, you know, the appropriate department in town. That's where it should come from, in my opinion.
Lydia, you wanted to say something?
I just wanted, just wanted to ask, I would, I'd run it by town council. Because if you've got a statement from the landowner, then the liability is on the landowner. You have a statement, you're putting the liability on the town. And I don't think that you want to be putting liability on the town for building something on a piece of property that's under APR. That's really lies with the owner.
I have done that, Lydia. I just haven't touched base with town council to review his comments yet. And I, and then I knew that there had been questions at a previous meeting brought up. So I was just waiting to get back to town council on this.
Just my two cents, sorry.
Thanks, Lydia. So Diana and Ed, to Bob's point and Marlene's point. So are, are we looking to support this at this point? And Marlene and Bob are going to just kind of clear, clear up or clean up number two as far as verifying who ultimately should be bringing forward that, you know, the, the APR or the A and R, you know, as far as the land that somebody is purchasing.
Yeah, I'm fine moving forward with it, with the opinion of town council. I mean, maybe it comes from both. You know, the, the landowner has to certify and it comes from the, it's a sort of a double check that the assessor's office backs up that what the landowner has certified.
Okay, I'm good with that. Ed, did you have anything to add to this particular?
I do like the idea of something from the assessor's office to verify, that's all. I, I sort of agree with that.
Okay, thank you. So, so do we, but Marlene, do we actually need a vote or just a consensus? Or what's the?
I think just a consensus. So I understand you, you'd like, you know, town council's opinion, but you'd also like to see added some type of language that the assessor's office has verified, verified the property.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah. I think it's just another check.
I mean, these designations, these designations are done, they're done very clearly. I mean, it's a piece of actual legislation. So there shouldn't be a lot of confusion about what land is in and what land isn't. This is pretty straightforward stuff, or it should be.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, we did have a situation over in Sunderland, actually, where someone built a house on an APR. So we want to, I think it's, again, this is what's going to get us a 15% reduction in any contribution too, so.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so let's, let's get it done, but I just want to make sure that it's done in a way that really makes sure we don't miss anything.
Yeah.
Agreed, okay. So thank you, Bob and Marlene, and the town council will just wrap, wrap this up.
Do we just wait until we get a final version after it's looked at by town council and vote on that? There's no, there's no sense of urgency? Am I correct, Bob Wagner?
That's why, yeah, we don't have any APRs on the docket right now. And I think what we needed, the policy to be adopted by you and just, you know, just sign and date it at some point after, cleared with town council.
Yeah, so well, well, once we get the final town council reviewed, then we'll, we'll just, it, it shouldn't be this long of a discussion. We'll be able to just approve it.
Right. Okay, great, Bob, are you all, are you all set on that or did you have any other questions?
Yeah, no, that's, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, thanks, Bob. Okay.
Can we do all these minutes?
Yes, I was going to ask, do you want to go back to the beginning?
Sure. So we have, we have minutes from numerous meetings. We have, I don't know how my colleagues want to do it, but we do have five sets of minutes. We do them all at once unless somebody has a question, or we can do them one at a time. We have, we'll do the oldest ones first, maybe. We have minutes from October 15th, 2019. Minutes from November 19th, 2019. Oh, I missed one. November 5th, 2019. So why don't we take care of those three since they're the oldest ones? If there's a motion on those.
I'll make a motion, but could I just suggest a, a change in the October 15th minutes? If he is key on the call still? On page two, there's a paragraph that the heading is finance committee. I, I'm just not sure it needs to be in the minutes. Why a certain member of the finance committee was not a lot, was not able to attend the meeting?
Yeah, I saw that.
It's just really not germane to the minutes whatsoever?
Right.
So other than that, I would make a motion that we accept those three sets of minutes.
And to amend the October 15th minutes to strike down.
Yes.
Okay, so a motion's been made, is there, and the motion's been made and seconded to approve all three sets of November 19th minutes. Given the, given the change on the October minutes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thanks. Now we have a set of minutes from April 7th and a set of minutes from April 21st.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the minutes from April 7th, 2020 and April 21st, 2020.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion on either of those sets of minutes? Okay. No discussion, motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. All right. Under topic three, we have the appointments and resignations. Most of which, well, some are just to accept and some are to discuss, I guess. So, fire department, Joe, Joey Engelhardt's been promoted to the rank of fire lieutenant, effective May 6th. So that's just, that's just an acknowledgement, yeah, congratulations, Joe, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Joe.
We do have a resignation from the police department officer, Anthony Gibbs. So we do need a motion to accept that resignation, if we could, please?
I'll make a motion that we accept this resignation with regret and thank Mr. Gibbs for his service to the town.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All I would say is he wrote a very nice letter to Chief DeKochak, which was forwarded to us, so we appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Marlene, did you want to speak to this? It has to do with the disclosure statement for the cemetery commission, just.
The recent appointment, yes, the cemetery commission. If, if the board would approve, this is just a disclosure statement that will be filed with the town clerk's office. Lucinda Williams was appointed to the cemetery commission and her husband is on the finance committee.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this is kind of a standard protocol when, you know, are working in a, in a city, town, wherever, where theoretically there could be a financial benefit, although being on the cemetery commission isn't one of those jobs. So, we, from a financial perspective, but we certainly appreciate Lucinda being part of that. So, this is a, you need a motion, right? Yeah, we need to approve this.
To approve this, yes, vote to approve it.
Okay, is there a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And thank you, Lucinda, for stepping up for that committee.
Yes, agreed. I didn't know, Marlene, are you going to speak to this or Sharon regarding the treasurer collector vacancy announcement?
I will. So I have drafted a, a posting for the treasurer collector's position. Edwina has verbally stated that she will be stepping down the end of May. But she has offered to stay on in a consulting capacity with flexible hours. Since sending you the copy that you have in front of you. I am, so one, two, three, fourth paragraph. I'm recommending that we, we ask for a bachelor's degree in accounting slash financial management business. And, and add three to five years of responsible experience in a treasurer collector's office.
Okay, I mean, I'm all for changing to a bachelor's degree. Why are we lowering the years of responsible experience?
I, well, I looked at the job descriptions for both the treasurer and collector's position. It currently states two years. I had conversations with, with Justin Cole a couple of times regarding, we, we knew that Edwina was, was helping us out and then we would eventually fill, fill the position. So I, I was going based on my conversations with him that we should be looking for somebody, you know, with, with more years of experience.
I, well, that's my point, we're reducing the years. I mean, we're, the draft I have says five years.
Correct.
And you're suggesting three to five.
The job, the current job description says two years. So I think I'm, I'm recommending that we, we increase, crease it.
Okay, okay. I guess I'm, because my draft just says five years, I thought you were decreasing it.
Yes, it does. And, and I was suggesting, I'm, I'm suggesting three to five years, but certainly whatever the board would like to discuss.
Well, I think, I think three to five years at least might increase the pool that we get to choose from. And, you know, while experience is important, obviously, it's how well the person performed at their, at that particular position, whether they're there for three years, four years or five years.
It's fine.
Okay.
I'm fine with it the way that it is and I agree with upping it to a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, I'm with you. So, so Marlene, sorry, go ahead.
You want five years for?
No, no, bachelor's degree and three to five years, just as you said it, actually.
Okay.
My confusion was, yeah, I thought you were reducing it, not increasing it because of what was presented to us, that's all.
I wanted to make sure that the board understood that the job descriptions for both the treasurer and collector, and maybe we should take a look at, I don't know, combining the job description. But it does say two years, so that job description will need to be updated.
Okay.
Otherwise, are there any questions about that?
No.
And do you have any thoughts or ideas in the process as we move forward? Would you like a screening committee?
I, I think a screening committee might be a great idea. I'm certainly willing to serve on that. If you, I mean, we should.
I'm fine with the screening committee too. What, Marlene, why don't we, why don't we keep going tonight with the agenda? Because we're a little, we're a little bit behind. But I, I would agree that a screening committee would be important and maybe if, if Ed's, if Ed's comfortable with it, I am. If Diana wants to be the board of selectmen person on that screen committee and then Diana and Marlene can, can figure out what other few people. I mean, I don't think it needs to be a huge.
No, it doesn't need to be huge, but.
I was just going to suggest if Diana and I work, work this out, and I'd like to go ahead and post this petition later this week.
Yeah.
Any way to get things moving, because.
Yeah, we can't, we have to move on it, yeah.
Right. Ed, are you good with that?
Yeah, I think that's good if you have Marlene, Diana and maybe one member from the finance committee, that's probably all you need.
Yep, great, that's an excellent suggestion, Ed.
Yep, okay, great, thank you. So you, Diana and Marlene, you're all set with that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Mar, Marlene, thanks for putting that job description together.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, let's see. All right, I think what I have next is a town hall renovation update.
That's our friend Ed.
Well, I mean, basically the, the renovation, they pulled out on Friday, so everything's basically more or less done except for that fire pump inspections and some checklist that they're going through. I mean, what's left is, Marlene can discuss, there's some discussion on a few bills that we've been going back and forth with. So maybe Marlene wants to bring up those items.
Marlene?
Yes, I just.
Can I just say, can I butt in on the pump?
Go ahead.
I, I just was, you wanted to keep the agenda for the next meeting, just to, the budget and the warrant articles. But I'm hoping I can jump in on that because there's a possibility if the inspection on the pump doesn't all work out and we can't open the town to the public on the 8th, that the town election may have to be moved back over to the fire station. So I just want to get on your agenda for next week.
It's fine.
Yeah, and in the meantime, we'll have a conversation to get the, the fire chief's take on, on that. So Ed, thank you for the update. Lydia, well, if, if we don't have any answer, you could certainly be on the agenda next week. So, Marlene and Ed, is there a, an end date in sight? I mean, yeah, I, I say that with a smile, but I mean, are they planning on everything, if all goes well? When are, when, when is everybody gone and all the permits are in and everything's testing? Is it like the end of June? Is it the middle of July? I mean, is there a, is there a date from the, from somebody?
The, the modified day.
Oh, you froze, right, when you were going to say it.
What's that?
You froze, we didn't hear what you said. You said the modified date and then you were gone, so.
Oh, no, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the modified completion day is June 25th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then this doesn't have to be on the agenda ever again.
Fingers crossed.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're just still, they're, they're waiting on the fire pump. It's supposed to leave the plant, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, it's supposed to leave the plant June 9th and that is still, still a, a date for it to be released. They're looking at about, I think, five to seven days for, for delivery. And, and, you know, just install that and do some testing. And as Ed said, they already are working on the punch list. And we, we have before us a change order number five, which, you know, we, we have reviewed with the architect. What you have in your packet, I received a revised change order yesterday. What you have in your packet, I received a revised change order yesterday, because they left off painting of the east wall upstairs, and that's $859.71 that's added. So instead of $31,789.43, the change order is for $32,649.14. Do you have any questions regarding those items?
Is that going to be the end of change orders, to the best of our knowledge? I mean, they're pretty much, they're pretty much wrapped up now, right? So.
They have, so we were aware of the landing grade. That was then adjusted, and, and so we, we reviewed that, I think, a couple of weeks ago. The trench finishing patch, that was for that sewer pipe downstairs, they had to patch that up. There was, oh, is that the wiring, Ed, number 26, code requires ceiling alterations? No, I don't think that's the wiring. Maybe it is, it may be, yeah.
Yeah, 26 was that, they, they found a whole bunch of wiring.
Yeah, okay.
Spider web, and they had to bring it up to cope.
Okay. All right. So, yes, I, I really do hope and, and would like to believe that this is the last change order.
Well, we won't know that until June 26th, when they're out of there, right?
Right.
Okay, so you need a vote for this and then you need me to come in and sign it, is that?
Yes, I do.
If, if the vote passes, okay.
Correct.
All right, so let me, let me just say the number out loud again, it's $32,649.14, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve that change order, please?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve that amount. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, I'll just, once again, like we do every meeting, on behalf of both Diana and myself, thank, thank you, Ed, for, for being the point man on this, and Marlene for being the point woman on this. I know it's taken up an awful lot of people's time. I, I must say, though, at least from, well, the inside looks great, but the outside just looks really nice with the fencing down and the ramp up and the lamp, the lamp, I mean, it really looks, it, it looks nice, it, it came out well, so.
And also, you know, I, I, I agree, of course, Marlene and Ed, you know, deserve a huge thank you, and I'm so grateful. But again, I, I always like to add a thank you to our employees in that building for their patience and working under difficult and constantly changing circumstances.
Right, and, you know, those, the, the people in that building, Marlene obviously included, it, you know, it wasn't just this, right? It's, and then you, you had a pandemic on top of it, so hats off to everybody in that building, so thank you.
Yeah.
All right, motion's, motion's been made.
Kyle and Phil have been very, very helpful, you know, throughout this process and, and here, making sure that there aren't any issues as far as the contracted work that's been done.
Right, that's good to know, thank you.
I do have one more item.
I don't think we voted on it, though, our motion's been made.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, motion's made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Marlene, I'll come in and sign that for you.
Okay.
Just let me know when.
Sure, whenever, whatever works for you.
Okay, thank you, yep.
And also, from, from Architectural EL, we received a, a letter dated March 3rd. I, Ed and I have, have reviewed it with Kevin Shea, the architect, and, you know, there, there can be some arguments made, but in the end, though, they, they have had to do some additional work due to just other problems that have, you know, developed along the way during the construction project. And they're looking at an added cost of $3,397.50 for construction administration services.
And you and Ed are on board with that? I mean, you know, I mean, you know, you're, you're on board as much as we can be on board having to spend another $3,400, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have reviewed these issues, concerns that the architect, not issues or concerns, but, well, they were for me, I guess. I reviewed them and, and talked to Ed about them, and, you know, as I said, Architectural EL, you don't always have control over everything, you know, under a construction project. There are unknowns, things that, that surface. And, you know, I want to make sure that we, we fairly, you know, compensate them for the worst, some items that develop.
Okay. All right, so entertain a motion to approve the $3,397.50 to Architecture EL, is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to approve the $3,397.50.
Thank you, Ed, is there a second, okay, motion's made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Marlene, just while we're on this particular topic, so, or Ed, when does the Architectural Access Board, where do we stand with updating them? And I, I know you've been sending things all along, by the way, Marlene, is there a, but is, is there at a certain point that we say we're done, or does Architectural EL send them something that says we're done? You know, so that they know we, we're in compliance with, with all the extensions they gave us over the last few years to, to meet all these?
Right, we, we sent them a report in January or February, and, and we are due to send them another report.
Okay, great, because we, if, if people remember, I think we had till September of this year to wrap this up. Yeah, to wrap this up once and for all, which should have been, theoretically should have been done back a few years ago, but, you know, we're there now, so we can't go back. But I just wanted to make sure, and, and I had no doubt that we were on top of it, but just to, you know, I was just curious as to when we needed to get them something, so. We probably don't need to actually get them something other than, I would say, at the latest, and probably mid-August at, at the latest, because if our cutoff date was September 1st, then we're going to need to let them know by then. You know, whatever, send them whatever they need for proof, you know?
Well, well, I'll, I'll be sending them a report, and then we'll send another report at the end of the project.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does, Diana, do you, or Ed, do you guys have anything else as far as the Town Hall renovation goes?
No.
Even if you did, you weren't going to say it at this point. Okay, as far as I'm concerned, I think we're moving on to the second page of our agenda, which is, we've got a handful of abatements that are being recommended by the DPW Director.
These are fairly straightforward in my mind, so I'm, I'll go ahead and, do you want me to make motions on them? We have to do them individually. Brian, I don't hear you all of a sudden.
Because I hit my mute, sorry, I think, I think we can do it in one motion, but maybe just list the three addresses that we're doing it for, and that way there's a record of it.
Okay, I will make.
Sorry?
I said, yes, please, long as they're all listed as a, so I have the okay to abate their bills.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
So I, I will make a motion that we grant the abatements for the following properties. This is a, these are water abatements. 114 Prospect Street, 115 Elm Street, Unit 9B, 115 Elm Street, Unit 7A, as presented to us.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second, I just have a question.
Sure, yep.
It, it says meter red in gallons, and why, why was that? Why was the meter readings in gallons instead of cubic feet?
Are you, can you hear me, Ed?
Yes, Sharon, thank you.
Okay, so that is an actual old meter, I guess, from what Tony told me, that it's one of the few ones left that reads separately, read differently. So once he can get back into houses, he will be changing that one out so that we can, you know, bring it up to.
Right.
Not cold, but bring it up to, to match all the others.
Right, it needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a problem with any more, same thing?
No, I think he thought they were already all replaced, and so I think just one got missed in the shuffle, so it's the only one that I know of.
Okay.
Well, both of them state that, Sharon.
All three of them stated.
All three of them state that they were red in gallons.
Oh, that, I wasn't given copies of the abatement, but the only, the gormacki one is truly gallons to, instead of cubic meters. The other two have, I think, need to be replaced, but I think they're for different reasons, but I'll defer to whatever they put on the paper, I just know that, that's, I don't know, sorry.
That's all right, it probably is old meters, because two of these are at the same street address, but just different units within the building, so, you know, they probably need to do the whole, check them all out at that address on Elm Street. Okay, sorry, the motion was made and seconded, did we already vote on it or no?
We did not vote.
Okay, thanks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Sharon, you're all set with those now?
Those will need to be signed, too.
Okay.
Yes, please, I'll put them with the warrants, because I'll have payroll and AP warrants, so I'll put them with there, so that when you guys come in, you could sign them then.
Will those be ready tomorrow?
Yep, I've got, they're, they're, I'm almost ready to go up right now.
Okay, so is it, okay, is Thursday okay?
Yep, Wednesday or Thursday's fine, you know, whatever you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, Marlene, under the Town Administrator Report, the Select Energy.
Select Energy, I'd like to defer that to the next meeting, I'm, I'm in communications.
Yep, good.
I'm in communications with the Assessor's Office.
Yep.
So that, this is for the project at Smith Academy, and that had been put off until this spring, and we, we never resolved the payment in lieu of taxes for the resident, so I'd, I'd like to follow up with, with the Assessor's Office again.
Well, as I recall, when I was on the School Committee, that, the idea, and then on the Select Board, I thought the idea was whatever the pilot savings was going, was, might come to the town, actually might go back toward reducing the costs of the electricity at Smith Academy. So the town wouldn't theoretically be getting cash back, but we would instead be getting a lower electricity rate for, for our school.
Right.
Okay, all right, so that's what we have to figure out, is that the deal?
And, and the, yes, the information that was presented several months ago to Select Energy, they, they disagreed with it. So I'd like to sit down with another plan going forward.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead, sorry, to somebody.
I was just going to have the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, just a quick update. The Fire Chief and I met with the consultant that we're working on. We're looking at having a workshop on June 25th, so we are moving forward with the, with the Preparedness Plan. I just signed an amended contract. The state, as a result of COVID-19, has agreed to extend this round for another year. So we don't think we'll need the full year, but we, we are continuing to make progress and we're getting in touch with town employees and, and residents that would be very beneficial to the, the workshop and dairy farmers, other farming operations and, and businesses, the Housing Authority, how climate control would impact, you know, these, these businesses and, and operations.
Okay, thank you for moving forward with that.
You're welcome.
I know you've got a lot on your plate, but.
Work in progress. Two, five water sewer improvements projects, Mass Works Grant, so I just submitted a, a request for reimbursement for $35,000, $35,000 for design services and provided them with an update. We have another update report due to them, quarterly report due in June. So we have the article on the warrant and Comprehensive Engineer, Inc., they're in the process of developing the documents to put the construction project out to bid.
Great, that's in August, I think they're looking to do that, right, at this point?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, great. It's an important project for our town.
Right, we also, I had, believe I, I may have brought it up at a previous meeting and confirmed with, with the engineer, Mike Oll, that the town will need to acquire some easements, and that article has been added to the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now, get near the end. We, so under new business, we were going to talk a couple of things, but one of them was about carryover for our employees, since the world's kind of topsy-turvy right now, and even if you took vacation, you couldn't go anywhere, so. I, I think that was just the, the topic of conversation, I know we've been dealing with the DPW Union representative out of Springfield and locally, and, and also not, not just the union, but our own employees certainly need, I think, a way forward to have the Select Board and the Town Administrator have a conversation as to what we think is appropriate for people's time off, in vacation time, given the current circumstances and unable to use it for the last six months of the year, basically, of, of the fiscal year, which would be, since this all started in January and we, no foreseeable future, certainly by June 30th, because that's our fiscal year, is when the vacation would, would either end or, or some sort of determination as to what the plan is. So, did I sort of say that in a nutshell, Marlene, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so. I, I, I don't know what, what Ed and Diana's feelings are, I mean, I think normally what could, normally, I think the employees can carry over two weeks or, or 80 hours with, you know, however their, their schedule works out. And I know that the, the DPW Union has asked that they be able to carry over, if they, if they still have it in their bank, basically, all their vacation, or, or up to a total of five weeks into the next, into the next fiscal year, which would start July 1st. As I said, a lot of people had, in the, not only the DPW, but our own employees take vacation time sort of in the March, April, May, you know, the, the weather's getting nicer timeframe, but that just isn't really a possibility right now, so. I think that what is, the, the question is not only the DPW MOU Memorandum of Understanding, but also what, what for our own employees that are non-union, what is our way forward? Is that correct? Go ahead, Diana.
I, I guess my thought was, under the circumstances, we should allow them to carry this over. They shouldn't have to lose it, but I think that we should request that it be used in the coming year, you know, in the next fiscal year.
Yes, I, I. And I think along those lines, Diana, again, I totally agree and support that, and, and as it is, whether they were carrying it over or not, vacation time should be used and approved by the, the supervisor of that particular department, so that there, there's always a coverage in, in the various workrooms to make sure that we're not shorthanded anywhere. I don't know, Marlene, did you have anything to add to that, or any other, did I miss anything?
Well, I, I think, you know, we, we should cap it, you know, a, a date it, it must be used by, so June 30th of 2021.
Yep, I think that's fair.
Okay.
Well, I mean, but for, just for the sake of argument, I mean, realistically, I doubt that any of them would, would be taking vacations anytime between now and even the end of this calendar year. I mean, we, I don't know many people that have anything scheduled, because no one knows what's going to happen, so that gives them only six months to use all of this time they're carrying over, as well as any other. So I would like to set that date, but I would like to, based on how things may unfold, maybe. maybe take this up again. Maybe we may have to do one more year.
Revisit, okay.
I, I think that's fair. That's a, that's a good idea, Diana. I think that's, um.
Because it's isn't anything that just goes away quickly.
Right.
Right? So let's give that date, but let's accept that, um, you know, realistically, based on how long we have to stay and the precautions that we're in, it may not even be feasible for them to use their, their next year's accrual plus the carryover.
Right. Well, if you, if you go through the various phases that the governor laid out, and I know I'm preaching to the choir to you guys, but I mean, i- if all goes well, if all goes well, you're looking at the middle to end of August for, for, uh, the last phase of this. So the, and, and so having said that, I agree with you wholeheartedly that, um, let's put that in place now, but if necessary, we'll just have to revisit it next year.
But they should try to, to take it all in the coming calendar year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so, Marlene, do you need something that specifically says employees are able to, to carry over whatever, uh, remaining vacation time they have? Is that how you want it worded? Do you, um?
So what their balance is at the, uh, end of this fiscal year, they be allowed to carry that forward?
Yes, to be used by June 30th, 2021.
Right.
The, the carryover portion of their vacation, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
The carryover, correct. That's, yeah, it's important to note that, yeah.
Diana and Ed are you guys?
What's out of motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion. So the motion's been made, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, is there any further discussion?
No, I, I think under the circumstances, that's the only fair thing to do.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, great. Uh, motions made and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you. Marlene, is there something else under new business you wanted to discuss?
Um, yes, I had, thank you. I had, um, received a late notification today, um, from Pioneer Valley Planning.
Oh, right.
Community Development Lot Grant.
Yep.
Has, has announced that funding is available. Um, and this is in response to COVID-19. Um, so there, there's a couple of, of, of options and, and I'm suggesting that we participate in the microenterprises, uh, portion of, of this grant. There, there's different sections. Um, East Hampton would be the lead. Um, and, and they would be asked if they would like to take on Hatfield. I, I was told that Hadley has expressed interest in it as well. Um, so each municipality would receive ten thousand dollars. Um, there is no financial contribution, um, by the town. And, um, there is a, a hearing that has to take place. There's a quick turnaround to this. This is, all needs to be, um, I'm not sure about the, the hearing needs to be held before June 5th. But East Hampton would, I believe, have the hearing.
Right, but the application has to be submitted by Ju- by June 5th.
By June 5th, yes, yes, right.
Okay.
And, and so what this does is this, this provides, um, assistance to low to moderate income commercial businesses. And, um, you know, it's, it's possible there may be some businesses in, in town that, that could use this assistance.
Sure.
Yeah. That would be great.
Yeah, so with, with your, your permission, I, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, ask PVPC to, um, include Hatfield in that application round.
Please, yeah. I, I'm good with that. If, yeah, Ed and Diana are saying yes as well. So, yeah, I think that makes sense. You know, it's one of those nothing ventured, nothing gained, right? So, um, we're not sure if we'll receive anything, but if we don't apply, we know we won't get anything. So, um.
That's.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Marlene.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, were we gonna do anything with the HR policy review or the special employees? Want to hold off on those?
Yes, please. Those are just there so we don't forget about them.
Okay. All right. Um, and I think, I think lastly, if I missed anything, let me know. So I think lastly was, um, and we started the meeting with this, wow, two and a half hours ago. Um, so traditionally, the Board of Selectmen changes the chairmanship after the spring election, which is normally in May. Uh, but since that's been pushed out till June, I just wanted to see my colleagues' feeling of still moving forward with, um, making the change of chairmanship. And then ultimately, that chairman can work with, with the select board members as far as liaisons to the various departments. So, um, I guess I just wanted to get a feeling. I mean, first off, I'd like to say, i- if we move forward with this, I'd like to thank Ed and Diana for their support over the last year. But I, I think now is as good a time as any to go it personally, to go ahead and, and have, you know, a, a, a change over into the, the chairmanship of the Board of Selectmen. It also, um, since this year's election, uh, is an unopposed election for, um, one of the members, it's not like we're doing anything that would change the, the outcome of that election. You know what I mean? It, it, we're not, we're not trying to pull a fast one because somebody else is, is, is running for, for an office or something. So I guess I just wanted to say that out loud. So, um, I don't know, Ed or Diana, did you have any thoughts or comments?
Well, if I, I mean, if, if we make the change, I'd be willing to, uh, forward Diana's name as the next chair so that we all take turns. I mean, I got on board, I was chair, then you were chair. So, and my, my thoughts, the next person that would be, would be Diana, and I think that would be fair. That's, those are my thoughts.
I'm on board with that.
Okay. That's fine. I, I'm happy, I, I'm honored to do that and happy to do that. Particularly, you know, you guys have, Ed has carried a heavy load, um, with the town hall renovations. And, uh, and certainly Brian stepping up, you know, and dealing with this global pandemic as chair. Um, you know, so I, I've appreciated all the hard work you guys have done and I'm certainly willing to step up and do my part.
Great, okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion that, um, Diana be appointed the chairperson, chairwoman. Uh, wanna make sure I say that properly? Um, to the select, uh, as the chair, chairman of the, uh, Hatfield Select Board. So Ed, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Diana. Thank you.
I, I vote. Um, thank you. And thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian, for, um, doing that for the last year. You know, I did it, um, for a few years when I was on the board before and it's a lot of work. So I appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
Brian, I think you've done an outstanding job in that position.
Well, thanks, Ed. You know, it, it's, um, it, you guys made it easy, quite frankly. I, I mean, we, we've got a very good board and we're clicking on all cylinders. And while we might not agree on everything, um, there's always been a mutual respect and, um, willingness to hear other people's opinions. And, and that is what makes us successful, in my opinion. So, so thank you, thank you guys as well.
Well, I appreciate being part of a team that focuses on forward progress.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. So, chair, um, I don't know what your first. Marlene, are we all, well, I, I'm sorry, Diana. You should say.
I'm trying not to let the power go to my head right away. Um, well, I guess we should probably divvy up the board, right? Who the board liaison ships?
You want to do that tonight or, sure?
Let's just do it tonight. Let's just do it. We're in, we're, we're two hours and forty-five minutes into this, let's just go for it. Uh, you know, obviously I can't take the fire department, um, so somebody else is gonna need to take fire and ambulance.
Okay.
Wait.
We can keep everything the way it is now if you want, right?
Well, so, so I'm, well, I actually had a thought about that.
For the most part, I mean, you know.
So I'm the council on aging one, but, you know, given that the council on aging is gonna be wanting to move back into the building and there's some concerns about the projects. I, you know, just when Ed thinks he's done with the town hall project.
I think that's a great idea.
I thought maybe it made sense for Ed to take the council on aging in the coming year because he's so familiar with the project down there. And I know that that's gonna be top of the list of concerns for the council on aging. And I thought that might make him actually the best liaison for the coming year for that department.
I think that makes sense.
As a senior citizen on the board, I guess I would.
That's not what I meant, Ed. Um, so I had building inspector, school and council on aging. Um, so that means we need to do a little shifting if Ed is taking council on aging. So Ed, who are you giving me?
Oh, right now, I'm listed as, let's see, head fire, police. Pioneer Valley Emergency Management.
Well, that's different, that's down below.
Yeah, okay.
That just. Why don't I take police? Unless you want to keep police?
No, it doesn't matter, you can take police. That's fine.
Okay, so I'm police, school and building department.
There you go.
Right?
Diana, you're also.
Hey, Diana, I would say, I, Diana, I think you should be the, um, the liaison with the town administrator.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if you want me to, I, I truly, and I don't mean this in any sort of disrespect to any of the departments, I, I'm just trying to make your guys live easier. I don't care who I'm the liaison to or with. So, um, you know, as, I think as, as the chairwoman, I, I think, you know, the town administrator's a biggie for sure. Um, I don't know if the treasurer, collector slash accountant go together and they, whatever that is, whoever that is, maybe should take both of those things.
Yeah, why, you want to take both of those, Brian?
Sure.
It's called delegating, Brian.
That'll, that'll teach me, sure, that's. Okay.
Okay. So Ed, you have what, council on aging, police and, uh, excuse me, ambulance and fire? Who has the DPW?
I currently do, but, you know, whatever.
Well, it's probably fair if you stay with the DPW. So you have the sort of the, the, uh, town hall, um, folks and the DPW.
Okay, do you want me to take the building inspector as well or are you gonna keep that?
Yeah, why don't you? Take the building inspector.
Okay.
And so that leaves me with school, police and administrator.
Yep, okay. Ed, are you good with that or is it, did you want to swap anything around or you're all set with?
No, I mean, I, if you want me to take the building inspector, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, you want to keep DPW or whatever you want.
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever works out.
Yep.
All right, so Ed's going to be, take building inspector?
Okay. Yeah, that seems like a fair split of those, um, among the three of us.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Can I just run through that quickly?
Yep.
So Brian has accountant, DPW, town admin, uh, I'm sorry, treasurer and treasurer collector.
Correct.
Yep.
Ed has building inspector, council on aging and ambulance and fire.
Yes.
And Diana, police, school and town administrator.
Yes. And for the record, I just wanted to show there are not eleven departments that were splitting up amongst us, which was part of the report.
Eleven departments?
Yeah, it was, it was in the report about, um, changing to a five-member board. We had way too many departments to split up amongst us. I just want it to show that that's a fair split and it's certainly not eleven departments. Um, so, uh, then we have to pick these representatives to these other, um, four. Um, two are within town committees and two are sort of representatives on out-of-town committees. Do either Brian or Ed have anything on this list that they're really dying to, um, handle?
I think, I don't want to speak for my colleague, but I think that he and I have been known to, to share some of those, um, the Franklin Regional Trans, uh, Transportation Authority and the PVPC.
Okay.
Um, both of, both of those groups only meet once in a while, really, and they, and they send out emails that we're on. So, I mean, I don't mind, you know, however you want to, if you want to give Ed one, give me one and then we'll backfill for each other on the other one or, you know, however, whatever anybody thinks, really. And I know Marlene, quite honestly, I know Marlene deals with both of them more so than, than the select board does because they reach out to Marlene in her position as a town administrator, so.
Right.
So.
Uh, Ed, do you have a, anything you want to weigh in on, on that?
I, I don't have a preference. I mean, I, I, the only one I, I not caring for would be FRTA because that's, uh.
Fine, it's my turn, fine, I'll do it.
Okay, so Ed, you're gonna take Pioneer Valley Planning Commission?
Yep.
And then we need to split up the two sort of in-town ones, which is emergency management and capital improvement. Um, you know, I've served on both, um, both this time and, uh, in being on the board before. I actually enjoy both, so I don't, if either of you really want to be on one of them, I'll take another one. It doesn't matter to me.
Well, I'll stay with the emergency management planning if you want capital.
Yeah, I'll take capital planning. I mean, that, that actually makes some sense because the capital planning, you know, it's a, that's a lengthy process. So I think having some consistency from the person that represents, um, the board on that committee is probably, makes some sense. So.
Yeah.
I'll stay on that.
Okay, good.
Um, I just wanted to mention just two other things. One is, um, you know, there was a post on, uh, Facebook tonight about illegal dumping at the DPW. Uh, and, you know, anybody who's listening to this, I would just urge them to be respectful that they can only take brush there. Anything beyond that really creates a hardship on the town and its employees. Um, the ability to dump brush there is something we, we do, uh, as a benefit to townspeople. So we hope that people will respect that. And I think we need to take some steps to figure out who's doing this. Um, but I, I'm happy to talk to Phil or, um, who did we just say is on the DPW?
Me.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to talk to him, um, but, you know, it's, it's, it gets pretty bad at times, so.
Well, we went through this, if, if you guys remember, I think it was last fall, if I'm not mistaken, that it was the same type of thing. And then, you know, to try to stop it, unfortunately, we closed it. And then, and then the residents who rightfully so expect to be able to go there on their days off and weekends or whatever, were upset because, you know, because of the illegal dumping that we had to take action on, so.
Well, maybe we just need to get to the bottom of who's doing it.
Yeah.
Let's find out who's doing it so we're not punishing everybody.
Right, right, I agree.
They should be able to do that.
Yeah, all right, I will, uh, get with Phil and Garrett or, or whomever as far as, uh, what's going on up there.
And then we have this really nice letter from Linda Maluski of the Real Folks Society saying that they won't be doing the bake sale at the election. And, uh, you know, which is so sad because isn't that just one of the best things about election day? And, you know, they're, they, I, they've literally been doing this as long as I can remember. I bet they've never had to miss one. And so, um, you know, they're doing the right thing. Uh, we thank them for doing the right thing, but we'll miss seeing them all there. And, and, and it sort of makes you realize, you know, what a nice, what a nice thing that is that they do now that it won't be there.
It's a ritual.
It is.
Agreed.
You gotta make sure you bring your cash down to the elections.
Yeah.
Get your homemade goodies. So, that was all I had. So that was all I had. Did anyone else have anything?
I just want to talk one thing, run back to what Joe was talking about. And that would be. As far as town meeting, how many warrants? I mean, I really think we should take up and discuss having just a few really needed for this town meeting. Because you're gonna be outside, you're gonna have mosquitoes. I think only those really important articles, the really need-be articles, should be the only ones we're discussing. And we have another special later in the fall when we know more information. It's just my two cents. That's the only thing I wanted to bring up tonight.
I couldn't agree more. And there's so many, you just pointed out, there's really a couple of really good reasons for waiting. One is obviously the financial information. But when we can do it in a way where people can be comfortable and inside is just obviously gonna make for a more productive meeting. So I agree completely. I think we can begin to make those decisions at our meeting next Tuesday.
Yep, I would agree.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you guys next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Ed. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Marlene.
Yep.